L U M C H U S, long just is better than all the rest. Wild channel point redemption is alien to come with strange attention. Luncher, luncher, three we go, clones is a robot, so much more. Two in for the last, that will keep you alive, which dot TV slash lunchers to catch him high.
Righty. Okay. We had a city council meeting. Oh fuck. Big up this city council massive. Um. I actually want to print some stuff out first, so I'm gonna quickly do that. Hey there mannequins. I don't know how much this is gonna cost. Tell them you're in the middle of a colonoscopy. So two grand would be enough. Yeah right, thanks how you, yeah not too bad, thanks. Uh it's this one, isn't it? Good cock was here. Oh nice, someone's taken off the. The feature, um. Oh, so they're pretty cheap, okay. Alright, okay, that's easy. And. Print this as well. Do they stack? Yep. Okay, good. Alright. Hey Gammie, how you doing? T- wha-? Wait. Twenty fold. Bahamas? Okay. My bright now today, considering going back. Oh yes, hello, hello mayor, uh did, did I read that right, the uh maidens at Bahamas?
Yeah, and you are currently two minutes late for it, so chop chop.
No I ain't. My, my, the clock on my car says I'm two minutes early.
Okay, you outside?
Eh, almost, yes.
Well hurry up because, you know, got a lot of things to get through today.
Oh you betcha.
Time is money.
Oh you betcha.
Alright, see you soon, I want you on your best behaviour, bye.
Of course. Considering going back to sleep, yeah, I know that feeling. Oh shoot, hi everybody.
Drink at the bar, you can get one drink and one bit of food.
Oh fantastic, I love the parking situation here, right? Super, super high, oh yes.
Who are we waiting for?
Um, yeah, Tom?
Ain't no food, are you?
Think it's just Reginald.
How you doing? Oh shoot, right, did you say there was food up here, Mayor?
I thought she said there was food.
I thought she said that, right?
There is no food, is it the other?
No, there, there is, you just have to order it from Dixon.
Oh, right, okay. She said it was on, on the bay and trap.
Okay, well, are we actually?
Oh.
Okay, we doing it, heyo?
Yeah, I mean, on a, on a seat Daniel, we don't need the show, come on.
Have you still not been back to uh? City Hall?
No, no, not yet, not yet, I mean, I guess we're gonna have to start without Reginald. Henry, chop chop, come on. Uh, right, so today's meeting has been brought, brought together today because. I uh, I need to bring up a subject, I'm afraid, people aren't gonna be very happy to hear about, but as mayor, it's my job to make sure that. Uh, there's Reginald, just Reginald to come, yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, we need to talk about budget cuts, okay?
Right.
So, you know, I really tried to make the current, you know, pot of money we have work with the taxes, the extremely low taxes that we've enforced. It's not working out, it's simply not working. So, I, we, this is a bit of a powwow really, to kind of figure out what each department in the council can look to cut back on to try and reduce these costs. Obviously Roger Luchuk, I'm looking at you as the, you know, the biggest expense of the, the city council.
Month before last, we didn't.
And I was supposed to get twenty five grand or something like that.
The month before that, we only got ten thousand.
Yes, well.
I, I've actually missed three meetings, so the hospital hasn't had any funding.
No, but, but I mean, you know, PD have had quite large trunks of money. You know, before, before that.
Right, but they haven't recently. What's happened between Dan and Neil?
Well, we, we had to, we had to scale back as uh, we were asked before. Yeah.
Well, what's happened with the budget, I'm, you know, the overall budget on your, and Miss Mayor, what, what's with the uh?
Well, I, I'm wondering, I'm wondering if we're actually seeing a case of tax evasion here, people are just not paying their taxes. I mean, it's really unfortunate that Reginald isn't here right now to answer these questions, because it'd be really good to know about, you know, he hasn't been collecting all the business taxes, you see, and that's really put a dent in our budget.
Right.
It's not surprising, I suppose, no, Reginald, not, not showing up.
Is tax, is tax evasion a crime, Henry?
Well, I necessarily Reginald's fault, right?
Oh, cause someone gave me a call, I'm stuck for chasing it.
He ain't the one avoiding.
Think tax evasion is a crime, no.
Oh right?
Oh, sorry, is that better?
Yes, it's uh, it's more like.
As much fair of us, can they, can people at the end hear us though?
Oh shoot, yes, I ain't very sec.
Right, okay.
I ain't very secure, uh, twice to be discussing this stuff, right?
Right, so people cannot pay taxes and there's currently no consequence to that?
Let's obviously go to charge.
I mean, could we vote on that now, maybe?
Hey Bacon.
I, I think, I think that's quite clear that it should be a.
Yeah.
Oh speak of the devil, he shall appear.
Should, yeah.
Jeez, this is probably the worst place to bring Reginald. Gets distracted by all the lights, it's like a fly.
Oh, but come on now.
J- Henry, do you not think it, it just energizes us a little bit when we get a new location? Hello Reginald, thank you for finally joining us.
Hi, oh yes.
We're getting around and.
I feel like taking my shirt off and jumping in the, should we take it up to the spars up there? I mean, we here, might as well go all out, right, get a private dance? Get some drinks, some mugs?
I'm going to uh, I'm going to skip that, if that's okay.
Have you ever done a shoulder out of a stripper's belly button?
I have.
Right.
That sounds awful.
Yeah, I don't think my wife would be too pleased about that, to be honest.
Oh yes, well why the hell are we in a strip club, mate?
But this is a bar.
Reginald, sit down.
Is it a bar where we, where we stand around right now?
This is a stripper bar.
Reginald, because you've been late, you can stand on the podium.
Yeah, I think that's quite inappropriate.
Yes, yes, agreed, actually, yeah.
Well, you, okay.
Did someone say something about a round?
Yes, let me get to what do you want, slager bombs, what we want, what we want.
No, 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 we're in the middle of the meeting now, no one is getting up their stool, until we resolve the issue with the budget, okay? Now Reginald, you're just talking about tax evasion, currently isn't a crime, okay?
Good, so why, why have I been paying tax?
Well. You, Luchuk, why is it not a crime?
I, I, I don't know, I don't make, we, we don't really make laws at the PD, we just enforce them.
I've been working on the, the honor system this full time. Can I just?
Reginald, can you just raise your voice, we can hear you better.
Who's that?
That's Barry. That's uh, that's much better.
Mate, how much does this place cost in per hour?
Uh, this was five hundred, right, but don't worry, I'm paying for my own money, out of my own money.
Your own money, right, right.
You're welcome for the free drink as well.
No, there was nothing up there, like you said, there was. I just, you know, I'm mine.
Listen, I'm uh, I just need to go to the toilet, I'll be back in a second, okay?
Oh, yes, it's a perfect time to go, shit, why the hell ain't we back up at city hall?
There's people posting on birdie about us having a meeting here.
Oh, this is fantastic. Why not bring them over and get them, get their vote on whether tax fraud should be illegal?
Um.
Why not?
What? Eh, I mean, I don't know, but eh, it seems a little bit inappropriate to ask a business owner whether tax evasion should be illegal, cause then they'll avoid tax.
Yeah, yes. Conflict, are you interested?
Yeah.
I mean. So, I mean, shouldn't we at least be in a private booth?
I think, yeah, uh, I think everyone can hear us from um. From over at the bar.
Yeah, should we maybe go into, to like, to that one in the corner where it's further away, or?
Yeah, I got an idea, I got an idea, uh Scarlet, could I get five slager bombs please? Scarlet, can I get five slager bombs please?
I presume.
Okay, she's making.
Uh, right, yeah, so. From looking from over here, I don't think Scarlet can hear you behind the bar, but I think Athena can hear you, and she's asked Scarlet for the slager bombs.
Oh shoot, right. It's councilman, uh, councillor Athena.
Throw a few beers and move it out of there, brother.
Is, is that one in the corner have seats, I can't see it, it's really dark.
Uh, I think it might own all of it.
Sorry, there's a top secret meeting going on, who am I helping?
Well, I've been told you wanted slager bombs.
Oh, that was top secret?
Well, it's apparently not top secret anymore.
Alright, I ain't your fault, I was just running a little experiment.
So sorry, I wasn't told that it was a secret.
Okay, add it to the mayor's bill, please.
Yeah, shall we all take one as well, please?
It's top secret, Scarlet.
Yeah, let's move to that one.
Yeah, we could just. Park train, round here, stand huddled in the corner.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh shit. When, when Suzie comes back, we should make it rain, right?
I'm not sure appropriate that would be.
Hmm, well, we in a stripper bar, a strip club.
Can we all just agree that the, the next time, uh, maybe we should meet in the usual meeting room?
Hey dogs.
Is um, has anyone seen this on, on birdie?
I have, it's outrageous.
What's that?
Some gossip columnist is making up lies.
Well, yes, it looks like, but it does um, it, there does appear to be some pictures of, of what looks like Suzie there.
Wait, what is this? Are Suzie taking out the bean? That ain't Suzie.
That's just.
Some lady in white.
Yeah.
You can't see the fix.
Luchuk, we might have to ask Terry to take that down.
Silly.
Terry, what is Terry's?
It's gossip guy. Oh, is this the asshole who did the uh?
Oh shit.
It's the one who's been shitting on the mayor, now he's, now he's making things up. I told you that was all bullshit about the uh. About the glow up, right?
Eh, which glow up?
I gave the mayor a big glow up. And uh, gossip guy ripped her apart, so she uh, well, she had a male there, where the hell is she?
Where, where does she live, is it, no?
She's staying in the motel.
Alleged, alleged, six, you know, six eight.
The motel.
Gossip guy alleges.
Yes, I don't think that's, that's the case.
No, no.
Man, sure, there's no way.
I'm gonna have Athena check on the man.
Yes, what the hell is she doing?
Who knows, who knows, maybe the stall door is stuck.
Oh maybe someone's in there trying to kill her, right? She's too scared to come out.
Uh, well, I mean, hopefully not.
I should be a little more sensitive, if ladies being too loud. How's it going, not too bad, thanks, right? Been doing a city council meeting in the strip club. Cause the mayor's too frightened to go back to city hall, and something tells me. Something's quite wrong here.
It's uh, it appears the mayor has left.
What?
What, she's, what, she's left the meeting?
Yes, I, she's not in the bathroom, apparently Athena said she never went in there, she went straight out the front.
Oh right.
Oh bloody hell.
Okay.
Is it because of the gossip columnist?
I nominate myself as acting mayor, uh, can I get a second on that, please?
Hold on there, Daniel.
Yeah, it's just.
Yes, Daniel, I believe we'd all, we'd all agreed that um, a city business license officer, if Mrs. was to, to come to any unfortunate end, that I would.
But, oh no, but I can't, I, no, no, I got in first, right?
But I'm sure you will be an excellent deputy, father.
Oh, right, yes.
If that happens, we have, but let's not jump to that right now, let's just try to figure out where she went.
I'm just, you know, thinking of hate.
What, I mean, what, what do they mean, cause technically we're all. Under payroll, cause she, that she's like the budget.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, I don't uh, understand, yeah.
Let me try and give her a call.
Oh, I'm, I'm trying right now. It's just, it's just call ringing. She ain't answering.
You're calling if the.
Went divorce, my, alright, maybe you should give it a try there, Reginald. You tried to be right, I've been dropping grenades down the chimney. Do we know who this gossip guy is? Do we have a uh, identity?
I've, I've never heard of them before, no idea.
No, I don't know.
Right, well, we need to find out.
About, but, thing that account is like, question marks or something?
I think this is the guy who did, who rolled up the uh. The fashion flop thing a few weeks ago, and the other one is that Willie Goose man, right? Who I, I think is a different account.
Willie Goose has like the uh.
A different one.
Yeah, this is a different thing.
Yeah, yes. Well, this would be the one who, I mean, they're quite absurdist, ain't they?
I'm a, I'm a quite a concerned, yeah.
Should we, should we perhaps um, send an officer or someone to check that uh, alleged residence of Suzie's?
Yes, one second, let me uh, see if I can get a detective on it.
So he's dogs in the mayor, if it's true, he's dogs now.
Should we uh, continue in her absence?
Eh, yeah, I suppose, so what was the next?
Big words, okay, I feel like there's a code of action here, maybe something we should be following up.
Right, well um. Wants his name there, is me to sort of detective. So, while he's taking care of that, why don't we get down to business, so father, in user updates from yourself.
Oh plenty, right?
Take it away.
Alright, well.
Feel free to stand on the stage, if um.
Okay, well I got some visual aids with me, okay? Okay, please take one from each pile.
I'll um, I'll pass them around, shall I?
Oh yes, okay.
You go, Henry. Do we have any, any luck? Wow, that is um. Certainly a lot of cocaine there.
Oh yes, right, really. Really drives it home, right?
See, I think the, my favorite part is the really dot, 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 goes up the note.
Hey, we're um.
Oh yes.
We're going to try and make sure the mayor is okay, so um. Probably pause the meeting for now.
No, shoot, I went to so much trouble.
Yes, a second, a second in command, um, yes, we, we shall postpone the meeting for now.
Oops.
Well, that's, that's not uh, that's not been decided, we are, we're all equal to here, Reginald. Yes, we're all about the same council, and uh, in the mayor's absence, we can all make decisions. Yes, we'll uh, we'll get the PD looking for the mayor, and uh, we'll let you know what's going on.
Alright, well I'm.
Let's call a recess on.
Trace a phone.
I'll head to the hospital, if anybody needs me, that's what I'll be.
Alright, I'll head to the church.
Yes, name, I'll. I'll, I'll go and run the city from, from, from city hall.
Oh shoot, yes, where are you?
Yeah, I've gone, got my, my own vehicle now, thanks to you.
If you need your number two, you got my number, okay?
Need your number two, sorry.
Yes, if you need your number two, I'm a phone call away, alright?
What, like, like the bathroom?
No, like the uh. Like right hand man, right?
Oh right.
Like the second, the second in charge.
I thought, I thought you were inviting me to come and shit at your house, or something.
Oh, you mother welcome to, shit, I'd give the mayor the same uh, the same invitation, shit.
No, perhaps not today, but, that is much appreciated, Father.
Alright, well, you got my number.
Yes, yes, yes.
Oh shit.
To see, we'll come back to it, but excellent job with the, with the leaflet, I must say.
Oh yeah, psyche, thank you very much, but play them all with their kind, right?
Around.
Alright, boss, yeah, yes.
Do you think um, do you think the mayor's tab still open at the bar?
Oh shit, yeah, probably, right? I could use some chicken wings.
Let me try to get some, something for the others.
Shoot, I mean, you're acting on her behalf, so.
We're uh, we're going to clear out and let you uh, get back to work.
Yes, do we have any um, do we have any opportunity in the situation?
No, no, we've uh, we haven't got out yet, we're about to go, we have to cover the costs.
Yee Dee, hang on, Yee Dee?
Yes, we'll, we'll get the money back from the mayor, but she uh, she didn't pay the uh, she didn't pay the place.
Oh shit, we was about to get some chicken wings, so.
Would you mind adding some chicken wings on, onto that, please? For myself and um, for herself as well.
Been paid already.
Oh.
I've covered a little extra, if you could give him some.
Oh, that is true, you did give us extra, yeah.
Yes, right.
Alright, thank you.
Athena, let's uh, just go and see if we can find a man.
Chicken wings, yes, please.
Yes, please, yes.
Oh shoot, hello. Oh shoot, yes, hello there.
Good evening, how can I help you?
Well, uh, I got a question for you, right, so what's your name again?
Uh, my name is Rostrum.
Rostrum.
We uh. Call me Ross if you must.
Ross, okay, now you the uh, reporter, man, right?
I am.
Say, do you, do you happen to know who uh, who this gossip guy is?
I don't unfortunately, he and I are in different lines of business, you see.
Oh right, I thought she'd maybe have pased across at some point, maybe knew the, the guy's name.
No, unfortunately not.
Well, she, you know. Who know, ain't no trouble, just uh, I mean, some of the things uh. He's been saying is a little uh, slanderous, right, you know, he ain't in any kind of trouble, but she, you know.
Here's your chicken wings.
Thank you so much, Miss Scarlet, look at that, smells daily, she is, thank you so much.
Lord, they do smell enticing indeed.
Quite nice, right? Now, city council, be uh, shoot, we'd be a real uh, real grateful for any of, for. real grateful for any information about this man.
Of course.
Yeah, yes.
If I should hear anything, I'll let you know. But until then, I'm more than happy to report on the uh the city council and the police department's doings, fully under my own name and in the public where it where it remains.
Yeah, it's right. Because I mean, you gotta, well, it seems like you gotta backbone, right? Unlike this other you know what I shouldn't speak of uh? I don't even know who it is, right?
Well, there's no harm in admitting that they're giving you some troubles.
Yes, well, they are, right?
Our job, isn't it, really?
Well, as long as you're reporting the facts, ain't shit we can do about it, right?
How charmingly put.
Thank you. Now, you get any you get any any information about who this who this person might be? Please do uh give us a call, all right?
Rest assured, Woodcock, you shall be the first to know.
Oh, shoot, thank you. You got my number?
I don't believe I have, actually. We should probably send that through, actually.
Let's exchange, right? She'd repold us, you know, she I should really uh you know, maybe I should take you out for a game of golf or something like that. You know what I mean? Try to be friendly with the local.
Much of a golfer, to be honest.
Oh, shoot, right.
Limper wrist, you see.
Oh, yes. Well, I, you know, I like to give it the old uh I like to give it a try. I ain't very good, but only one way to get better, right?
Poetry is more my thing, you see. My wrists were always um better employed in other pursuits.
Oh, yes, right. Poetry aside.
Yes, well, I've been known to dabble.
I love that, right?
You could call me a verse queen, I suppose.
Oh, right, yes. Really, yes, right. Real queen for them voices.
Anyways, I um I'd probably be better getting back to my business, but.
All right, yes.
You'll be the first to know, my dear.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate that. And you and you and. All right, you as well. Toxic. Thank you, ladies.
Hello.
We'll catch you next time, all right?
Okay, I'll I'll see you next time.
All right, bye bye. And so see you later, Ryan.
I'll see you later.
Goodbye, Daddy Cog.
Bye bye now. What is going on? Cast hello. Did I say hello? How you doing? Like I'm not on retired. Spending time with the misses, yeah. Priorities. Um. All right, well, I'm gonna try to see if the mayor's at the fucking motel. I've done like got all this all this stuff prepared. Uh, this gossip guy, though, is really laying it on thick. It's RP for you, yeah. I was supposed to die. Is this the right one? Yeah. Our cars are here. Mayim. Mayim. Mayim.
Hey, how's it going?
Need a strong response from Susie. Hiding is only gonna add fuel to the fire. Oh, it will blow over. It's only gossip guy, the person he posts about fashion flops, trying to remain relevant. Yeah, it seems like quite the idiot to me. Ready to step up as acting mayor should you need some time off? Reginald, that isn't how it works. Um. I'm at the motel. Um. Great for the murder case, but the bar thing. Uh, on a season when you went into the motel rooms, just find her dead on the bed. The gossip guy calling card. Are you busy? Kicking off the one. So we can reschedule the meeting. Well done, Daniel, for kicking off the anti cocaine scheme. So we can link a ways the budget for further city funds. Oh, well done. The amount of injuries that can come from using is truly ridiculous amount. Iceberg. The E O? You are. It's you are, isn't it? I spoke. So you are? Lives. Oops. Well, they should have come to it. Well, they should have come to it. I greatly appreciate your support in nominating myself as acting mayor. I would ensure the churches uh receive the investment it deserves. Um. So I think you would make a fan. You have my support. Suzie.
Hello?
Hello? What are you doing?
I'm uh it's all a big misunderstanding, okay?
Right? Well, these.
I was staying. I was staying at the motel, okay? And then there was there was a misunderstanding with management there. And uh, yeah, and then I ended up finding a place. It was a steal, to be honest. It was all I had. Do you really think that I would steal, Daniel?
No, he's saying anything about stealing.
That's what the gossip guy is trying.
You're fucking chaos what that asshole has to say. Who cares? He's an asshole.
Well, you know, I'm not gonna be coming back to the motel because I'm this is quite a nice place, actually.
Where are you staying?
Well, in my home, but if you you can come up and see it if you want, but with complete discretion, of course. I'll have to let you in the gate when you get here.
Of course. What's your postal?
Six zero six eight.
Six zero six eight.
Come in, okay?
All right, I'm on my way.
All right, bye bye.
Bye. Is that is she actually fucking there? Oh, dearie me. Uh, let me put my money away. How much do I have? Yeah, that's that's more than I'd like to lose in a fucking robbery or something. Deposit a grand. There we go. Yeah, it's up in the hills. Oh, no. Cunt. Oh, my God. What is going on? How'd gossip guy? Fucking what he's what's he been stalking now? Okay, the cops are here.
Hello?
Mayim, I'm here, but you realize Paul Lights are here too, right?
And they're not left yet?
No, they're still at the front.
Right, I'll let you in now. I'll just lock the gate behind you, okay?
They know you're here?
Uh, yeah, they they got through my gate before.
Okay.
Hardly out of concern.
All right, I'm I'm approaching the gate now.
What are you still doing here?
Oh, um we're just on the phone. Oh, hi.
Okay, please, yeah. So, okay, sorry, I can't hear you over the gate closing, bye. This way, Daniel.
Oh, dear. Okay, this your this your house, huh?
Well, it's an investment, yes.
Right, so you have every right to be here.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Oh, this is look at these. All right. And uh.
Got a barbecue with it?
Oh, yes, look at these, okay. And now uh so I mean, what's the big deal? You got yourself a nice home, right? What's the big deal here?
Well, exactly, yeah. But I think that's gossip guys trying to say that I paid for it with the city council funds.
And you ain't done that, right?
Wait, what's this message?
You know what?
What's what's that about? Sorry? You had some of the materials cover.
Yes, I do. Mad fake. Listen, why don't we uh rejoin the may uh redo the maiden, right? We'll head up to city hall.
I'm not going anywhere near the city hall.
Mayim, mayim. I'm with you. I'm with you by your side. You'll have Pauli sale.
La 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 la. I'm not going, Daniel.
Okay. Well, what about uh PD headquarters again?
I'm.
So you just uh so okay, so what's your big plan, huh? You've run away from the maiden without telling us nothing.
I had lady problems.
Right? What's your mind?
I I had an accident.
Right?
Yes, I broke a nail. Yes, that's exactly what I meant.
Right. Mayim.
Time of the month. These are my period pant shorts.
Oh, oh, shoot, really? We'll stay in back, please. Just don't.
What are you on about?
Keep that much distance, all right, please?
Look at that sunset, Daniel. That's worth all the money that I paid for this house.
Yes, which is how much?
Oh. Oh, it's tacky to talk money.
Yeah, it's right. And you've uh put your own money into this place, huh? Paying it off and.
Mm hmm, mm hmm.
Right?
So if you could um if you could correct the course this seems to be taking because of this stupid gossip guy, as Henry has said. Um, you know, that'd be most appreciated, Daniel.
What do you want me to do?
Very might be really helpful for your career, you know?
I'm listening.
Well, that was it. That was the end of the sentence.
Right, okay. Well, mayim, you know, I gotta say I mean, if if this is your place roughly, who cares if that gossip guy's reporting on it? Who cares? What's the big deal?
Hmm? I don't know how they found out about it, but it's that fucking estate agent.
Well, he's obviously uh stalking you, right? We need to bring him in and put him in jail.
Hmm, yeah, will you get on to that?
Yeah, yes.
You go and speak to the. You go and speak to the police about that for me, yeah? This is too, this is too much for me. I've been through too much over the last few weeks, Daniel.
You won't?
I've been through too much over the past few weeks.
Who's that? Said neighbours. You've been through too much, I get you, right?
What, what do you mean, who's that? Don't say that to me, Daniel. You're gonna freak me out.
I just seen somebody running away up there. I don't know if, uh, maybe, I just caught a glimpse of him, right? Maybe I'm, maybe I'm, uh, saying things. But okay, so you want me to, oh, look at that. Oh, shoot, there's a lot of steeps right there.
Yeah, it's, um, it's nice, got our little lake, you know? I could, I could almost do a 360 at the place. I feel safer here.
Oh, yeah, it's right. You got Victor coming, Ryan, taking a look at things?
Not yet, um, he hasn't been around for a while.
No, fantastic.
Last meeting.
Right. Alright, well, uh, I mean, my, um, the city council is very anxious, uh, to get things back on track, right? I mean, I don't-
Daniel, you, okay, if everyone wants this meeting to go ahead so much, you message and I'll message now and say that I've given you blessing to run the meeting. Pardon the pun.
Pardon?
Blessing, you're a priest.
Oh, oh, yes, of course. And so you want me to be the mayor?
I just want you to run the meeting.
Right, so I'll be mayor.
My best interests at heart, okay? If anyone tries to say anything against me, Daniel, you better, you better make sure that they, uh, they don't try and take anything further, okay?
Right.
Use your influence.
So I would be, what would my role be here? While acting mayor?
Sure, that the, the integrity and the structure of the city council as it stands now remains. And there might be some money in it for you, okay?
Alright.
Not a bribe, obviously. It's a, it's a overdue gift.
Oh, yes, right.
Hard work you've done with this, uh, anti cocaine campaign. Brilliant stuff.
Fantastic. Oh, you're gonna love what I've come up with, right? But, uh, alright, listen, right? What do you need me to do? I mean, we got this gossip guy thing, obviously causing you a bit of strife.
I want you to go and sort that meeting. Just calm everyone down a bit, okay?
Alright.
Keep me updated, okay?
And what I just say, it's, it's, uh, you're having later issues, right? Everything's fine, she's just, uh, how do I put this, uh, delicate like, uh, how do I put a delicate like?
Uh, how do people say, um, uh, the river is running red?
The river is on my, uh, the, sorry, the river is running riot?
Yeah.
That don't sound delicate, right?
Anti-flow is visiting.
Anti-flow is visiting, right? What if I just say, uh, you own your period yet? And you got the sweats? You got the sweats?
I've got the period sweats, yes, that's fine.
You got the period sweats, alright.
And just be very clear, it's got nothing to do with this current situation.
And I ain't got nothing to do with current situation and, uh-
With gossip guy.
With gossip guy, okay.
Come on. Right, hurry up. Let me know what happens.
Alright, I'm on my way. Okay, you be around later after the meeting?
Yeah, yeah, potentially, yeah.
Well, I'll give you a call, alright?
Alright.
Leave it to me. I ain't gonna let you down, ma'am.
I'll, I'll let you out.
Thank you.
Hi. Silly clown.
Uh, Daniel?
Oh, shoot, I can't see that low. Okay, no, sorry. You got a pool boy, surely?
Well, no, I don't actually. Got to cough for that right now. Right, let me just enter the code.
Bye bye.
And please don't tell anyone else about this, okay?
No, please, uh, I mean, my lips are sealed.
Okay, I'll see you later.
Alright, I'll talk to you soon. My god. Uh, sit there. Oh, should have just cut down there. She's sleeping with gossip guy? Now gossip guy is a real prick to her. That would be quite the twist. Whoa. Fuck off. Alright.
Oh, yeah, I wonder how it's going?
He did mention that to me, actually, so, yeah, I hope he's getting on all right.
Okay, so, uh, in the mayor's ab since I shall be, uh, running the rest of the meeting.
Of course.
I have, uh, talked with the mayor and she, uh, it's, it's nothing to do with the gossip guy thing, right? She's got the, uh, the period sweats.
Ah, so she went home?
Yeah, yes. She retired back to her-
To her mansion.
To her, the place she's staying at, yeah, yes.
Uh, is she renting it?
We did, that did not come up in conversation.
Not fair enough. Yeah, well, I know she has a lot of money from the lottery she won and stuff, so. Not surprised she has a big house, but yes, I didn't expect we'd be invited over, you know? Pool party for the city council.
Oh, yeah, yes. I'm, you know, maybe she, I don't know how long she's been there.
Strange, I would let you believe she lives at a motel.
Well, I've seen her living at the motel, right? So I'd say if I had to put a timeline on, she's been there a few, few days, maybe a week or two at this new place. Alright, this fucking gossip guy asshole, I mean, he's, he's slanderizing the mayor, right? We gotta, we gotta put our end to that.
He also can, yeah, he also can't speak English properly because, uh, attended the illegally residence.
Oh, right.
Left to that to investigate. Like, how does he know what we were even doing there?
What's that investigate? Like, what's he implying? He's trying to, uh, paint a very nasty picture. Yeah, yes. Did I ask him to come in for questioning or something like that?
Uh, Reginald, can you hear us okay from all the way down there?
Yes, 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 he's just fine.
Okay, wonderful.
Has there been any-
Okay.
Why are you-
On the mail. I'll tell you what, I'll come down now.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, come join us, please, Reginald. Okay.
What the hell is going on with Suzie then? Someone fill me in.
She's got the period sweats.
Alright, yes, yes.
Yeah, yes.
Let's leave the mansion.
That accounts for today.
Yeah, it's right. Well, she could have had the period sweats the other time as well.
Yeah, but-
I suppose these meetings are-
Probably go off console. Is there some other print?
Oh, he's on. We'll just give it a chuck a moment.
Of course. Yes, Daniel, so, uh, I had a look at, uh, your leaflet, your poster that you made.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Looks good. So that's going to be like, uh, is that going to be a regular meeting or like a one-off sort of extravaganza? What's the plans for this?
What for the strategy?
Yes, for, what kind of, what kind of, um, output are we expecting here?
Alright, lemme-
Just the flyers or is it more of a, like a pitch or a campaign or?
Okay, I go to, did, did everybody get a copy of, uh, well, first of all, the, uh, Don't Snort Report? Poster?
I didn't get a copy of the poster, but I have a copy of your, your strategy.
The three folds, okay? Who didn't get the three folds strategy outline? Everybody got that?
I don't think I have a copy of that.
Alright, lemme, uh, hand some out to you.
Oh wait, there's more than one?
Yeah, it says a poster with the lady with the handfuls of cocaine.
Oh, yes, I have the poster.
Alright, I've also got the, yes. Could everybody please come up and, uh, grab a copy? Who ain't already got it?
I've got one, yeah.
Alright.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, yes. It's what I call the three-fold strategy.
Can you, uh, walk us through?
Okay, lemme, okay, let's, let's start with this, shall we? Okay, it's, uh, the three-fold strategy. There's a three-pronged initiative to adequately deal with the city's cocaine problem with an emphasis on harm minimization. Now, the first of the folds is the four A's, which is for civilian action. The second of the folds, the four D's, is for the law. And the third of the folds, the four H's, is for the policy that underlies all, all the other folds, right?
Am I, am I looking at the wrong, the wrong wiffle?
Have you got a, it says the three-fold strategy right up top.
No, no, it says cocaine.
Oh, no, that's the, that's the, uh, the propaganda piece, like the, uh, what do you call it?
Uh, poster.
The poster.
Yes, maybe don't call propaganda.
Right, well, I mean, you know, without the negative connotation, obviously. So I think there's still copies up, up front here next to, uh, Henry. You wanna grab one, Mr. Reginald?
Oh, yeah, she knows.
Okay, so the four A's is very simple, easiest to remember, right? Not now, not never. Not now, not never. An, 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 an. This emphasizes to, to civilians, the civilians, that they should never do cocaine and encourage them to never buy it with a very easy to remember phrase, right? Not now, not never. Phrase will appear on most Don't Snort Report materials, right? As you can see on the, uh, on the poster that we, that we've got today.
Okay, but I mean, we've got like two different phrases linked to this. Isn't that a bit confusing? Not now, not ever, and then don't start report. There's like two different things.
Yeah, so the campaign is called Don't Snort Report. And they, uh, that's, you know, that consists of the, the three folds strategy.
Okay, okay. That's contained within Don't Snort Reports.
Yeah, yes, that's right. And there's three, one faces the civilian that we see in the posters, right? Then there's one that's for the law and for the way it's going to be handled from a legal perspective, which is the four D's, which we'll move on to next, and the four H's as well, which is the core tenets of the whole thing. So the four D's, detect, drain, divest, detention, okay? So detect is police identify from where and from who the drugs are coming from. Then the police will drain the resources of, of the drug dealers, so the police will confiscate all the cocaine they find.
That's what we do already?
Yeah, yes.
Fantastic, Daniel, yes.
Of course. And then, uh, well, this is where it really, uh, gets a little, uh, may need a bit of discussion, right? Divest. The user's code and possession of cocaine for the first time are offered diversion classes run by myself. Or, maybe not necessarily the first time, but any possession charged under a certain weight. Maybe X grams, you, you'll be offered diversion instead of an immediate prison sentence, right?
That in ten grams is-
Ten grams?
What if someone keeps getting caught with that same amount, though? That wouldn't really- Yes, I think it should be left at officer's discretion, similar to, uh, like community service.
Well, this is the point.
It's a good idea.
You go to, okay, this'll become clear when we get to the top core tenets, right? Because what we're doing here is to treat this as a health issue primarily, right? But we'll get to that. And then the final D is detention, which means obviously very harsh prison sentences for pushers, dealers, right?
Yeah.
Now, the four H's, which are the core tenets of the Don't Snort Report campaign. Number one, health. Cocaine epidemic is treated primarily as a health issue than a criminal issue, right? Hence the diversion. People coming in, they getting into trouble with cocaine, we need to try to fix them. We need to fix the issue they have and instead of just, just, uh, throwing them in jail, I ain't gonna do them any good because they gonna come out still addicted to the cocaine. Second H is honor. The council are committed to honoring the health and safety of all Los Santos citizens, right? That's a core tenet of the Don't Snort Report campaign.
Hmm, of course. Oh, I think there's something wrong with my copy. The others are like, uh, smudged or-
Oh, the other H's? Uh, where I couldn't figure out a, words begin with H that, that go together as a theme, right? So they're kind of, uh-
What about, um, hunger? You know?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Offenders will be, um, barred from eating food.
I, I, I don't think we can do that.
Barred from eating food? No, because-
Yeah, I don't think we can do that one.
It helps to have the opposite effect on their health. We, we want them, this is all about health. That's why, that's what made me think of four H's. Because the, because obviously one has to be health. Then I made up honor, which kind of works, right? But the other two, yeah. I don't think hunger is gonna fit in. I was thinking maybe hero? I don't think hunger is gonna fit in. I was thinking maybe hero, like heroism, like uh.
What about uh?
The council of heroes. Oh, hug? Yeah, yes, right. So this strategy is like a hug. It's like a. We're not trying to push you away or harm you. This is like a hug from your government, what's that?
Yes, we're trying to comfort you.
Yeah, yes.
Yes, what, what about um? What about horny? You know, like, we're, we're horny to get you off the coke, you know? Getting you off the coke.
Well, I've heard of a thing. Well, you've heard of coke dick, right?
I actually haven't, I haven't heard of that. What is that?
Oh, it's when uh, when you have too much cocaine and you're just kind. You know what I mean? You, you can't uh. You know.
Arrival or finish?
Rise to the occasion.
Yeah, yes, yeah, yes. That's probably the best way to put it. Yeah, yes. So uh. I mean, so yes, horny would work there because uh.
Could be confused with the uh, the restaurant.
Yes, of course.
I was gonna say, if you.
Oh.
Yeah, if you use that, there is a chance that they might try and, try and sue you for, you know, their trademark or something.
Yeah, yes, right. Horny uh, what's another word for horny? Oh, handshake, right?
Yes, like perhaps like making a deal, something like that?
Oh, right.
With a handshake?
Handshake, make a deal with uh. We all make a deal. Yes, handshake, we all make a deal.
Yes.
Like uh, we all get to get, get to get, get along.
Like an own, an own drug deal, obviously.
Yeah, yes, yeah, yes. Okay, handshake and hug, I think uh, I think we can work with that, right? Let me write that in. Okay, I'll update this for next time.
And ho- horny is a backup.
Horny can be a five uh, but we'll get to the, the, get to that, right? So there's also the uh, just moving on from that, there's also the possibility to extend the strategy into four folds, not three folds, right? Including the four Ps for pushes, which would be purity, peace, place, and prayer. So these would apply to the, the dealers themselves. They would take a commitment on that. It would work out better for them if they go along with the four Ps, right?
What's prayer in this context?
Well, prayer to, it better than say else, right? Get closer to God. And, and in doing so, would eventually uh see a minimizing effect on people wanting to push. See what I mean?
I don't know about the, the Ps, but I, I, I very much like the start of this, first.
Yeah.
First few, I'm, I'm very on board.
Well.
I think it's, I can actually, eh?
Well, matter of fact, doesn't have to be limited to four folds or three folds, could be anywhere up to twenty-six folds. Four A's, four B's, four C's, all the way to four Z's. Cause there's only twenty-six letters in the alphabet. See what I mean?
Right, it could do numbers.
That'd get confusing. That'd get confusing, cause uh.
Like A one, A two, A three.
Oh, yes, we could. Yes, you're right. No, you're absolutely right. So the scars are limited. And uh, it doesn't have to be folds neither. Could be five, sixes, whatever we want. Ain't no limit there.
No, I thi- I think it's still twenty-six. Um, I'm thinking really hard, but I can't think of any words that start with A three.
Oh, yeah, it's right.
Have multiple sets of A's. One would be A one, one would be A two. They wouldn't have a number in the word, but it'd be like, those four are the A ones.
I think if we ran out, if we went all the way from A to Z, then we'd have to, we'd have to, right? We'd have to go into assistance.
That possibility.
Yeah, yes.
What's about those um, those things in the phone? Those, those um, what, what's it called? Those little smiley faces in the text messages and things?
Oh, the emojis.
Oh, shoot, right. So you could have the uh, the four smileys. Smiler one is, I don't know, I just, I just had cocaine. Smiler two, I just quit cocaine. Smiler three. I know, just relapsed or something. Smiler four, I got clean for good, something like that. Makes it easy to remember because of the, because the smileys.
Yes, we're all there. I'm sure we're all very open to any ideas you might have.
Yeah, yes. Oh, thank you, Reginald.
Three, his first three, very good.
Yeah, yes. Oh, thank you.
Yes, we can uh definitely do something with this.
All right. And you know, I mean.
Make a note of your proposal and uh, yes, and that's quite convincing.
Okay, fantastic. And you know, it takes a commitment from uh, from all of us, right? From the community, from the police and from the council, all working together.
Yes, we, speaking of that, the uh. I don't want to talk out of turn, but it uh, the mayor has been acting rather strange for quite a while now.
Yeah, yes.
Of course.
Just uh, wa- wondering everybody else's thoughts on uh, on that situation.
Uh, well, today's the first time I've seen it in ages, so I don't think I'm uh, really qualified to talk on it.
Well, last time she had us do the meeting in the middle of the park at Lesion. And then after we spoke for a few minutes, she ran off into the sewers.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, she kept, she kept calling me Henry.
Right.
There was somebody else's name that she was also um, getting wrong.
I'm, I'm rather worried that the mayor may be under a lot of stress.
Oh, she called Henry Daniel at one point.
That's likely, in fact, yes. She seems to be under a lot of stress, yes.
Yeah, yes. Well. I think uh, I mean, all things considered, she. She's trying to bias, right? She's okay, I ain't going back to City Hall, which is obviously a major issue, right? But uh, she's still committed to uh, make sure these maidens are getting set up and run properly.
Yes, it's, it's, it's more the worry that she uh, constant belief that somebody's trying to kill her. She uh, she actually came to me with her concerns about Luchak. She uh, she thought.
Yeah, yes.
Trying to kill her as well.
Yeah, yes.
Really?
Which is uh, is, is obviously nonsense.
Obviously.
But uh, this uh, this, this paranoia and stress, so it's uh, it is starting to worry me.
Well, I think this new place, she's got real good for that, right? She can see kind of all around or all around the back. She got a three sixty view of anybody coming for.
She's, she's got a new place, don't she?
It's the, yes, it's the one in the pictures.
From the gossip guy, I think she's.
True, is it?
It's true.
Yeah.
Oh, Jesus.
She said she's paid it with her own money. Okay.
What's that place?
Well, maybe she got a good deal, right? Being mayor and all, she probably got a good deal. She.
I mean. There's not um, there's not smell of it wrong that. On the same day, Susie's um. On a rant. About cutting back budgets, about no money, no money left in the pot. Found out that um, Susie's made this purchase from his lesbianist. It's beyond her means.
Well.
I have, I have faith in Susie, but it's uh, it is a, is a concern.
Well, she did mention, she did mention uh, and uh, Reginald, I mean, I, I told her there must be some kind of mistake, right? But that it ain't your fault or nothing, but apparently uh, she, she was saying something about you wasn't able to uh. You haven't been able to get people to pay up the license fees? Oh, shoot, that's calling, that's her calling now. Shoot, okay.
Taxes, which is not reasonable.
For your own speaker, Daniel?
Yeah, speaker on phone.
Yes.
What's going on?
Hi, hi, ma'am.
You're supposed to be giving me updates, Daniel.
Oh, yeah, it's right. Uh, how them, how are the periods sway it?
Yeah, I mean, I've had a bath now, it's, it's getting better.
Oh, yeah, it's right.
I was gonna get myself some fast food because, you know, cravings and all that.
Right, you sure you don't wanna come join us?
No, 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 no. How's it going? Any, anything interesting happen that I need to know about?
No, we've, we've went through my uh, three-fold strategy, right? For the uh. Oh, what's, you want me to, where I can't, that's why.
Well, it's, it's the meeting, it's still ongoing now.
The meeting's still going, everybody's looking at me. They want me to put you on speaker.
Uh, uh, yeah, I'll stay quiet. Everyone else can continue as normal, okay?
You wanna be on speaker?
Yeah, go on.
Or I'd say hello.
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 Hi, uh.
Hello.
Yeah, go on, just act like I'm not here, go on.
No, we won't, we wish you.
Oh, it's okay, yeah. I've just got myself some food from Hornies and feeling much better.
It took a bath as well, you was.
Just discussing your new um, new property. A great surprise.
Daniel, you didn't mention that.
Congratulations.
I didn't mention, no.
Listen, no, 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 I don't wanna interrupt the flow. Carry on, carry on with what you were talking about, please.
Okay, well, I think the mayor's, you know, more than uh. Oh, hang on, shoot, what was we talking about?
Uh, you were just saying how you want to vote in no confidence.
Excuse me?
No, you, Daniel, that's what you're saying, right? You're saying uh.
Yeah, just before the phone call.
What was I saying?
That was what we were doing.
I don't, I don't know.
Sorry, you think you can do a vote with no confidence about me?
No, no, we was talking about something, I guess. No, I didn't. What are you saying?
Daniel, oh, are you trying to say you'd do a better job as the mayor?
No. No, I mean, my capacity as mayor right now, it has.
To be very clear, everybody in the room, uh, Daniel is not acting as the mayor. Daniel is just running the meeting.
Yes, 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 everyone is aware of that. In the event of a catastrophe, I would um, be acting mayor. Yes, we've already covered this.
I don't think we agreed that.
It'd be Reginald or my side, right? All right. Okay, well.
Okay, but do continue. I can still do my vote um via, via phone, right? So.
Oh, shoot, yeah, it's right. So uh, well, maybe we should move on to uh budgets, right?
Oh no, come on, let's get this uh sorted.
Get well sorted.
Don't just start closing down topics, cause I'm on the phone, Daniel. Run the meeting as you normally would.
Yes.
All right, well, I think uh. Oh, shoot, Roger, you were saying something?
No, no, I, I was finished.
Oh, shoot, right. Yeah, it's okay. Anybody else want to add to what uh Roger was saying?
That's about um.
No, no.
All right, well, I hereby. I hereby move this issue along to the next issue. Which is uh.
What is that?
Oh, shoot, well, uh. I had a doctor uh. Ah, fuck him, what's the name? The orange-haired Dr. Lighter, right?
Oh, Malone.
Yeah, I think it might be Malone, right? Doctor Lighter. And uh, she mentioned at the uh. The uh, community meeting the other night that, that uh, she wishes the uh. Hospital had a bit, bit extra cash. I said I'd bring that up.
Yeah, like I said, when we were um, in my mama's, I've, I've missed a couple of meetings. Uh, just due to scheduling conflicts, so I haven't been able to put forward a budget proposal because I haven't been here. But there is still money in the hospital pop for the general running costs. Um, not lots, but I mean, we are, we are getting by, um. No fancy new machines or anything, but like, yeah, you know, we're, we're still able to feed the patients, treat them, make sure that, you know. Everybody's uh medicated as need be, but I do have my proposal for today as well, so hopefully that'll. Put uh Dr. Malone's mind at ease as well.
Oh, shoot, fantastic. Now might be a good time to uh, hear that proposal.
Oh, excuse me?
Dude, uh, you're excused, hello?
Yes, yes, um, yes, I hope it aligns with the city council's strategy of saving money. Uh, yeah, no, it's, it's, it's not, uh, it's not, it's not a large budget.
It's to save lives, right?
But can we not get like patients to buy their own food rather than us paying for it? Uh, it's, it's very difficult. Usually when we are feeding patients, they are actually unable to leave the, the hospital bed. And that's why we have to like provide the sustenance. Uh, so it can be, it can be quite difficult to arrange that. But can, can the next of kin not pay for the food and get it back off them?
Well, ma'am. I mean, with this uh, we got to keep in mind this gossip guy, so we still don't know who this, who this person is, what they up to, right? So while they're spinning their.
Food from people, yes, well.
Yeah, yes, while we're. Yeah, yes, exactly.
Okay, well, I've already told you what the issue with the budget is, so.
And what was that issue again?
That we're kind of spending more than we're getting in at the moment.
Right. And you was blaming Reginald or something, right?
Simple finance, Luchak, okay? I know that might hurt your pretty little head, but. Some of us have to like forecast for the future and we are in the red at the moment.
But what are we spending a lot of money on? That's what I'm concerned about.
It, it was my understanding that our um, outgoings were actually under control at the moment, you know, and, you know, previous months PD needed uh, some help with funding, but. As you said, I believe that our outgoing funds are actually.
Can I make a?
Under control.
Can I make a suggestion? Two words. China, China. Oh, one word, sorry, China.
China, China, China.
No, just the one, the cha- just. Just one China, forget everything I've said, China.
Are we going on a trip to China?
Probably.
Oh, shoot, maybe.
Sort of cups and plates?
No, no, the uh, the government, right?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure what you're proposing, Daniel.
We borrow money from, we borrow money from China.
I don't know how they'd feel about that. Um, but in CD, the, the, the budget should be all right because they, like I said, I've missed a few meetings. So the hospital hasn't actually had a budget delivered to them.
Yeah, exactly, so.
Well, I mean, you know, a lot more people joined the city, you know, moved in than I anticipated. So you know, this kind of welcome bonus people are getting, that enters a lot of the, the funds as well, you know?
Right.
Adam Min is not giving me any more money for that, so uh, that's had to kind of balance itself out as well.
Yes, so, so wouldn't we have had quite um, you know, advance notice that this problem is going to arise, it sounds rather. It's taken us by surprise almost.
Well, I feel like we're focusing too much on the problem and not focusing enough on how to solve it. So like Daniel said then, China, that's a really good suggestion, Daniel, thank you.
Yeah, yes.
I don't think that is gonna work, cause we don't have any relationship with China at this point, but.
What about? Sri Lanka?
Maybe let someone else share a suggestion, Daniel?
Perhaps there could be an action for him, for Daniel to take.
Well, I think it's a group thing. It's a team effort, right?
Not an action of him, you know, you know, connecting with him, with China.
Right, well, he's got enough on his plate, I don't think. That's quite a big goal, so no, we won't be doing that.
I mean, I know the Chi-. Sorry?
Let's move on from this. Any other suggestions?
Yes, I thi- I think my concern, Susie, is that um, without knowing that the cause of the problem. Any suggestions that we come up with are, are, are going to just be patchwork.
I've just told you the cause of the problem, Reginald.
What was it? Financial troubles?
Yes, now, if we don't sort this, we're heading towards a recession.
Oh, don't say that word.
If we, if we just borrow money, that's gonna fix the issue of where the money that we're losing is going into.
Exactly, so that's why I'm saying we need to save.
Perhaps we could uh, bring in somebody to look at the books.
What if, what if we just uh?
I'm quite capable of doing that myself.
So let's just imagine.
For a living, you know?
Let's imagine there's a gigantic uh, over in the corner over there near the uh, doorway, right? It's a big elephant, gigantic elephant standing. There's a big elephant, gigantic elephant standing between us and the doorway, right? And none of us really wanna, wanna talk about it. And let's say the elephant, that's the cause of all our problems here, right? Who's the first to say something about that elephant yet?
What, what do you mean?
Well, we got...
Sorry, I'm not following.
There's a problem, right, and it's a big elephant in the room.
Yeah, we're talking about the problem.
Right. I mean, I pointed the elephant ad, I'm just wondering if anybody else wants to come in on that elephant yet, right?
Yes, like myself and the Jack said, if we bring in somebody that's a specialist in dealing with an elephant, then, uh, perhaps we could get to the root of the problem.
Oh, yes, right.
With the Chinese, I believe, um, with the Chinese, there are plenty of elephants.
Um, no, that's Thailand.
Oh, well.
Oh, shoot, that's no good.
Yes, if, if there's a, you are under a lot of stress and pressure at the moment, Susie, perhaps if we get in somebody to help with the books?
You hear that, Suzie?
I mean, I could certainly cast my own eyes off, over it, you know, just as, um...
Reginald, you can barely look after the business taxes, don't, you're not looking at those books, I don't trust you one bit.
Oh, but I am, I am familiar with, um, financial audits.
Are you? Are you familiar with them? Have you ever carried one out, Reginald? Have you done PD's financial audit yet? Oberhammers?
Miami, it ain't his fault that the, the books are a bit old, right?
It's starting to sound a bit condescending here, Suzie.
Well, I'm sorry, but it seems that everyone's kind of ganging up on me here a little bit, I've told you that isn't happening.
We're just trying to fix the issue, I'm just focusing on what the problem is.
Well, that isn't fixing the issue, because that requires spending more money, Luchuk.
No, but we're not, we're not gonna have, we're just gonna have Reginald look on it. We're not gonna have someone new.
Really needs to be focused on the business taxes, Henry spoke about this in his performance meeting.
But he stepped up pretty much since then, you know, he's, uh, he's very much on the improvement.
If we don't solve this issue first, then the business taxes are not gonna be that important, if we're, somehow all our money is disappearing.
What about if we just raised taxes, Luchuk, and said, what about that? I know it's not gonna be the popular opinion, but, you know, I'm willing to take the blame for it, okay? I'll just, you know, I'm the leader of the city council, I need to show strength and courage and make the decisions that aren't the popular ones.
Alright, can, listen, I'm just gonna say something, I just want everybody to hear me out, right? Cause I think there's a genuine concern that we need to, uh, pay attention to, right? Now, the, uh, the way the, uh, this gossip guy has been tweeting about you, I mean, it's very obsessive, but it's, he's definitely, uh, trying to paint a certain picture here. And, uh, if people are reading this and believing it, I mean, does anybody else see a problem there? People gonna read that, say, look at the mayor?
You were saying bad publicity is, is good publicity, any publicity is good.
You, you're kind of twisting my words a bit there, Miami.
Oh.
Not when it's gonna destroy your cr, your career.
Listen, I just went and got a burger from Hornies and they were fine with me, there was no issues in there.
Yes, I don't think anyone's taking that seriously, it's all a bit, uh, bit silly.
They can see how ridiculous it sounds, how far-fetched.
Yeah, yes, and, uh, I mean, well, listen, Miami, I know, I know you're very scared at the moment, right? I know you've had near-death experiences and people out to kill you and all this kind of thing, right? But now, what this, what this person has done has doxxed you, given away your location where you're staying at. And show it's a very, very secure property, but, uh, I mean, I could jump the fence, and I ain't even that good of a...
Well, I'm gonna get CCTV sorted, don't worry about that, I'm already speaking for Ace about that.
So by the time, uh, there's an intruder detected on your property, to when you get stabbed today, the police would have been like...
Are you trying to make me feel better or worse here? I'm, I'm not quite sure what the point is.
I'm trying to make you feel better, Miami. Trying to make you feel better. Now, I'm pretty sure I saw somebody snooping around that property, now? Okay?
No, you said it was a local, so...
I think it may have been your neighbor, but I seen them, they were snooping, then they ran off. Now, here's the thing. This asshole, we gotta find out who this asshole is, he's doxxed you.
Roger, I need, I need police doing patrols, regular patrols around the property.
That'd be a good start.
Not on the property, just around it.
That'd be a good start. Maybe get a police boat out the bay.
I'm sure we can have somebody swing by every now and again.
Thank you.
Yeah, whatever the same, yeah.
We seem to be losing sight of the actual issue here, though, around how we make money.
Well, how, okay, with, how many, uh, future meetings we gonna have where, where you read a tweet by this gossip guy and you go running away, Miami? See what I mean? This gossip guy is a problem, I'm wondering what we can do about it? What do we do about that yet?
There's not a lot we can do until we, uh, find out who it is.
We slander, well, yes, how do we find out who he is? Cause he's doxxing and slandering her.
Well, we'll have detectives look into it.
Okay.
Yeah, of course.
Alright, fantastic.
Perfect, perfect. See, this is more like a collaboration, this is what I thrive off.
Yeah, yes, yeah, yes.
Did anyone pay Dixon, by the way, at Bahamas? Because I forgot to pay on the way out.
Yes, I, uh, I covered the cost.
Thanks, Roger, I'll, I'll pay you back.
That's coming out of you, who's, I mean, is that coming out the, uh, city hall budget or from your own pocket, Miami?
That's from my own pocket, yes.
Oh, shoot, no, you can't afford that yet.
Oh, okay, thanks, Daniel, that's really kind of you. If you just send the, the money straight to Roger.
Right.
That's lovely, thank you.
From where? Where's it coming from? City Hall?
From your personal pocket, that's what I thought you were suggesting, you were suggesting, right?
You want me to pay for the, uh, unnecessary maiden up at, uh, Obamas? Alright.
I'll, I'll sort, I'll sort it out, don't worry, Roger. Anyway, we're getting sidetracked again, Daniel, I don't know why I put you in charge of this meeting, cause you've gone on so many bloody tangents.
Are you joking, mate? This has been the most productive maiden we've had in months, Miami, I mean... I'm sorry.
Speaking of, uh, money and, um, budgets, um, there is this... Well, we're not sure the source of it, but there's a, there's a big leak underground in the PD, like, near the cells, that's been getting a bit worse.
Oh, shoot.
And that's like the one thing that we need, um, budget for, uh, this month. Uh, cause it started underground and we're afraid that it's, uh, might be getting worse.
Now, you get a sinkhole, till you get sinkholes.
No, it's, it's coming from like somewhere in the, within the ceiling? So, we might need to hire somebody to, like, properly look into it?
Uh, have you had it budgeted out?
Yeah, it said, like, between seventy to eighty.
Oh, my lord, okay.
It's a, it's a big building and they have to, like, scan it and look through it. No, sorry, uh, thousands.
Seventy thousand to just scan it, Luchuk?
It's a very big building, I, I...
Are you drunk? Are you on drugs right now? Are you, are you, are you taking evidence out of the evidence locker?
Miami...
We should con, contact some, uh, some local, uh, handyman and maybe see if they can, uh, get that price down a bit.
Yeah, yes. We can get that price down. What's gonna happen if you do just...
Groundwork is where we do most of our work and if it becomes, you know, an issue there, then it would completely halt any work that PD is doing.
Oh, it's gonna cost more in the long run, huh?
We, we work down there as well.
Yeah, yes.
That's where like the, the lab is, the interview rooms, it's where most things, most important things in the PD are.
Alright, I think we can, we can shift a few things around and, uh, get that seven for you, okay?
Yeah, okay, Daniel, where are you getting that money from?
Well, I'm being a leader, Miami, you put me in charge of the, to lead the maiden, right?
Okay, you can, you can fundraise, there you go, fundraise for the money.
I don't know where the money's coming, I'm, are you saying we can't shift a few things around, get them seven a day?
No, we can't shift a few things around, give seventy grand to inspect an issue, and not, that's not even the... Hmm, I mean, what, what, what can a bit of duct tape not fix, is my question.
Oh, shoot, I got a idea, right? I got a idea. Now, this, this, uh, this is actually a second, uh, issue somebody brought up at the last community meeting, right? A buyout, uh, hunting licenses. And, uh, hunting weapons, various, all this to talk about hunting, right? We charge people to go hunting. There's another nice little, uh, revenue stream coming in there. Fishing, hunting, you need a license, right? Cause we're conservationists all of a sudden or some shit, right?
I, I like that idea.
That helps bring in a steady stream income, to be fair, eh?
Yeah, yes. Shuts the people up about, oh, I wanna go kill my animals, brings us in a little bit extra cash.
Well, I'm not crazy on the killing animals part, but if it makes money...
Oh, except kookers should be killed on sight.
You know, they're only animals that are in need of culling, you know, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of wilderness up north.
Well, maybe it depends on, you know, the more rare the animal, the more you pay.
Uh, that, no, that's, I don't think that's how that should work, that's, that's worse.
Oh, you think so?
I think it should be more based off of, like, the deer population's too high, then that sort of thing, rather than, yeah.
Yes, quite, quite, I, I would agree.
Right. Well, there's, you know, two birds with one stone. Perhaps a, uh, new line of hunting, uh, accessories, weaponry, and we tax hell out of it, right?
That means we need to spend money on guessing these weapons.
I suppose you're right. China.
How are we paying for that?
China. What if, okay, how about this? What if, if you wanna buy one of these things, you gotta pay, you gotta, uh, pre-order. You're gonna pay upfront, including taxes, tariffs, all of that. And we, uh, we keep the profit and buy, and order me in the weaponry.
What kind of checks will we be doing on these people, uh, getting these licenses?
Well, I would, uh, I would expect, uh, no, uh, no, uh, weapons violations in their, in their past.
Yes, quite, quite, yes, no assaults with, uh, with guns.
Well, there's a lot of bloody, bloody deer around here where I live.
Yeah, yes, I saw that on the way up there.
Yeah, I nearly just ran one over.
You, uh, you driving while you're on the phone, Suzie?
I've, I've got Bluetooth in the car.
So, uh, what, where are you headed?
To my home.
Oh, she went and grabbed the horn is. Comfort food, right?
I'm sorry, do I need to ask? What? Go on, Reginald, what?
I'm just asking, the house warming, it looks like a tremendous house.
No, no, I'm not having a house warming. The reason I got this house, Reginald, was so that I can be away from everybody and keep myself safe, seeing as no one seems to give a shit about my safety.
I do.
That's absolutely not true.
No, we definitely do.
Here they at Miami?
Quite like one myself, it was, how much, how much did that set you back?
Beep boop, beep boop.
Hello?
Beep 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 beep. Oh, sorry, I'm just, um, just putting the key code in the gate, one sec.
Su, Suzie, I was just asking, sorry, how much did that place set you back?
I think I could tell what numbers they were, excuse me?
Uh, one, it's, it, no, that wasn't correct, but nice try. Um, the...
I don't.
Talking about money is just tacky, right?
We spent the last hour talking about money.
Well, yes, we have a city cash.
Personal expenses, yeah. My Reginald, I won't tell you the amount, but I will tell you you definitely could never afford it, okay?
Well, people gonna, people gonna be reading this gossip guy thing and think he's using city funds, Miami. They're gonna think he's using city funds for, to...
Well, that's fine, they can think that, it's not cor, it's not correct.
Perhaps you could, uh, put out a statement or something?
Yeah, yes.
No, I'll just let it blow over.
Gossip guy ain't gonna let it blow over.
Listen, why have we managed to get back onto the subject?
Well, it's all very relevant at the moment.
Yeah, yes.
But I, but I appreciate you taking your time to drive around the city instead of coming in and speaking to us.
It's our custom, Henry, or?
Yes.
Well, you know, the meeting still, still seems like it was going on okay when I called, so...
It's still going okay, Miami. No, it'd be a lot better if you was here, wouldn't it be better if she was here, y'all?
Yeah, you said, I don't, I don't think, ar, arguing that, um, things can manage fine without you here at all, it's probably not, um, it's not great for job security. Generally.
Miami, why don't you just pop on up, right? We got the place, uh, nice and secure. Ain't nobody around who's gonna jump out the bushes and try to, you know, murder you, do something awful, right? Ain't gonna happen.
I still think that a statement would be a good idea.
Hundred percent.
What dropped me to say? I didn't do it.
Well, just so, right now, people might not be believing that person, but as you're silent on this, they might start leaning more towards his side.
Yeah, yes.
No, no, see, what I think is that I'm just giving that person attention and, and getting abused to their account. I think the best thing to do is to meet all it all go over.
Can we buy him?
There's, there's actually a petition I've just seen on, uh, social media.
Oh, don't, what about, what about?
Uh, to, uh, to audit, uh, city council funds.
Alright, okay. They've got fifty thousand signatures, okay, listen, uh, this is getting quite serious, Miami. I think, uh...
If we could just look into city funds ourselves, and, uh...
Yes, let's do it internally before, uh, this petition gets any weight.
Okay, I'll do it, I'll create, I'll create a summary, okay, and then we will, we'll post, and that's what I'll do, I'll do the audit. Why should Reginald do it? Oh, no, I'm, I'm happy to do it, it's in-house that one, I'm happy to do that, okay?
Miami, you got Reginald here?
It makes sense if I do it.
Generally, an audit is, um, a fresh out of ice, Suzie, just in case, you know, there's anything there that, that may have just slipped under, slipped through the cracks.
That's probably what happened, right? Just a little mistake, little mistake is happening somewhere. What are you?
Fresh eyes, fresh ideas, Suzie. I won't be stepping in your toes.
We could, uh, we could put it to a, a vote for people here at the moment.
I vote no, there we go, vote done.
I'm abstaining, I'm abstaining.
Well, I get two votes, I get two votes as the mayor, okay, you're gonna have to say who's voting what, cause I can't see you all.
Woodcock abstains.
Okay. Sorry?
Woodcock abstains.
No, no, there's no abstain in here.
Yeah, there he is.
No.
Really?
Come on, Daniel, take, take a, take a stance.
So, can we just be very clear what we're voting on, please?
Alright, what are we voting on?
We're voting on, uh, Reginald to, uh, have a audit of the city council funds.
Yes, a harmful audit, just to see if there's anything slipped through the cracks.
We'll give him the, it includes Reginald, Reginald can't vote, okay?
I don't, I don't, I don't see why he can't vote, he can...
He's biased, of course.
But, um, he just wants the best for everybody involved, right? Don't you, Reginald?
Yes, yes, I won't take... Yes, I wouldn't dare of taking any action, you know, without informing the council. It's purely an investigative look through the, you know, through the finances, anything that looks out of place, you know, I'll raise with the city council, we can then, you know, discuss how we want to handle it.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, yes.
Perhaps, you know, for spot, some money that we're hemorrhaging, we can discuss ways to, to stem that.
This makes the most sense to me.
Yeah.
Purely investigatory.
All right, let's take a vote. Let's take a vote. I'll start off to my left here. Uh, Henry, yea or nay?
Reginald is being performance managed. He won't do a good job of this, okay? I'm just letting you know now.
Uh, we're putting it to a vote, man. Okay, but we need, uh, how many people? Six people here? Seven people? We need a vote of four. To pay it, to let, to allow Reginald to do this, right? Henry, where are you staying?
Yeah, I think he should.
That's one, yes. Roger?
Why are you getting so defensive? This is the best way to find issues.
Oh, you're not even in the right frame of mind, Henry. I think you need to go back to the doctor for a health check and make sure you're actually fit for work. I don't think that his vote stands, to be honest.
It does, mate.
Think he's perfectly fine, yeah.
Yes, we have, we have a doctor right here, uh, Suzie.
That was checked out.
Okay, that's one, yes. Roger?
Yes, absolutely. I think it's, uh, I think it's the best.
Of course you fucking do. Of course you do.
Okay, Luchok.
Only because I, I said, I, I, I turned you down in your motel room, Roger. Ridiculous.
I don't think that's.
Everyone thinks Roger's a, a family man with his lovely wife at home, but as soon as the cat's away, the mice will play.
All right.
This is rather outrageous.
Really has nothing to do with the vote, right? Luchok, where was, where was?
I vote yes.
Quite inappropriate.
That's right, yes, he is. Okay.
I'll ask him for seventy grand for a little leak, geez.
Reginald, where are you staying? Yes or no?
Yes, it's a yes. It's a yes for me. Suzie, listen, there is, um, someone, you know, following you around, exposing the things that you're saying, the things that you're doing. It's probably best that you stop acting the way you are right now. And just take a, take a deep breath. We're all in the same team here.
Man, I'm saying get the money back from the, from the fucking house, put it back in the city hall and deny everything. Let's cut the bullshit here.
Excuse me?
Get out of the house, put all the mo- I, I vote no, by the way. Just saw the record shows. I vote no.
I just say, what, what, Orion? Orion, before you even, no, no, wait. Wait, 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 wait. I need to go back to Reginald for a second. Reginald, okay? Right? Why are you trying to act like this is in my best interest for you to do an audit?
It's in overall best interest, Suzie. The citizens are angry. The citizens are, you know.
So, I need.
Orion, can I just remind you about the amount of times I've supported you? Never questioned a budget that you've asked for, ever. So, please, just, let's all just give Orion one more time, just to make sure that they're really thinking about their vote and the decision that they're making.
All right, we'll do, we'll start over. Henry?
Oh, am I in a, are you saying I'm acting like a hysterical woman now? Is this what this is?
No, no.
Nobody's saying that, Suzie. We're, we're just trying to get to the bottom of it.
You're just being hysterical.
Orion?
Uh, yes, uh, so I really do appreciate it, but I do think that a fresh pair of eyes going over would assist you in finding out where the money is going so that we can help you, you know, raise the money back up.
You there?
The tie.
I don't think that's true.
Ain't a tie, it ain't a tie. I vote no, you vote no, everybody else votes yes. I'm just gonna, man, okay. Everybody, please just do excuse me for a moment, okay, man? My, man.
Yes.
Okay, I've walked out. It's just you and me. I got you off speaker. I'm keeping my voice down. It's just me, all right? Listen.
Right.
Uh, you, it, it, game's over. You need to get rid of the house, put the money back in the, in the city hall. We all know what's going on. We all get it, right?
Daniel?
Before it gets to an audit, cause then you're fucked.
Why would you ever think I would do like, like that?
I don't, but that's what everybody's gonna think. That's what everybody thinks, I can tell you. I don't, I know for fact.
Okay.
You would, listen, even if you did, I'd be all for it, right? He fucking cares. But people are digging deep here. And it's if, I mean, man, you got, you're gonna be in big fucking trouble, right? You need to.
Well, good luck to Reginald, that's all I'm saying. Good luck to Reginald getting into my fucking computer.
He can't, he. All right.
I offered, I offered her, uh, a place to stay.
She, she's gone then?
There's nothing, uh, there's nothing until.
She's gone, uh, I believe the yes is have it, right? I mean.
Yes, yes.
We all know what's gonna, I mean, what if, what if we convince, uh, to just fucking undo it all, right?
Well, I believe we can see after the audit on what the situation.
Well, no, before the audit, cause then, I mean, if it gets to an audit, she's obviously fucked, right?
She has been taking city council funds to fund herself, then there will be no redemption for it. That's a vote of no confidence.
If she gives it back, right? With everything considered, I think perhaps, uh, shoot, we deserve, which, you know, we could, we could find it in ourselves to give her a second chance, right? After everything she's been through.
Daniel, if, if she's stolen potentially millions of dollars in, uh, the city, I, I don't think we can just say, uh, say sorry.
But if she puts it back and we all pretend like.
Crime.
No, but, I mean, it is if she doesn't put it back, right?
Even if she puts it back.
No, still.
So, it's still, uh.
I mean, yeah, it's, it's, it's still been done, you know?
Yes, that's, that's how we meant to put our trust in a person that would do these things.
Well, she's in control of the books, right?
Or perhaps, uh, perhaps that the next mayor, we, uh, do it as a, as a group.
Right.
Not one, not one person.
Well, I'm saying, right? Is if by the time Reginald gets his hand on the, on the books for the audit and everything's back to normal. Because whoever's in charge of it now makes it look fine and the money's there and everything's okay.
Daniel, you, you, you're, you're saying we should do, we should cover this up?
No, I, I ain't. I'm just saying if it's, if it can be covered up, who are we to say it's been covered up or not?
The, the city council.
Yeah.
It's, it's all of us that are going to be looked upon for this.
Then what's the point of being, what's the point in doing the audit? We already know.
We, we don't know. And as far as I'm concerned, we are, we do not know. We don't know if the die has been cast.
Well, she could cook the books back in the other way, put the money back in, the order would come out with dead list squad.
It's, uh, there's, there will be a paper trail, even if the money goes back in.
That's our paper, Reginald.
Yes, yes. I thi- I think, um, you know, in the interest of fairness and the integrity of the city council, you know, I think speculation, we should put to the side for now and just, you know, await the conclusion of the, the audit, await the findings.
Yeah, yes.
At that point, we can act on facts rather than, you know.
Now, does she, does she have the power to veto that? Does she say, no, we ain't doing that?
Uh, I don't believe so, uh, as the whole council took a vote.
Yeah, yes.
Where, where are these records being kept?
Well, I think I might have a, have a clue. I don't think y'all gonna like it.
Considering our vote, she, she will have to turn them over anyway.
Well, I believe they are on her personal computer.
Be expected to, I suppose. She wouldn't need to still give access, but.
Well, yes, that's the thing. How you gonna access it without her giving you access?
Well, I mean, I, I should refuse to give access point blank, you know, I think at that point. I know my, I myself would be willing to consider. I both have no confidence in that point.
Yes, I'm afraid it would have to be.
And then, well, she gets to keep the house?
I think, um, transparency is a key. Particularly within the city council.
Of course.
That, uh, that, that house has been bought with city funds and, uh, you know, she does not get to keep the house.
Either way, we are all in for a shitstorm.
Yes, this is going to be.
Yeah.
Well, uh, well, I'm not saying the cover up will help us all, but if somebody was to walk in here and say, listen, you're good people, you're honest good people, but a cover up is in your best interests. I don't know if I'd tell him to fuck off straight away.
I believe in the system, Daniel. I don't.
I do as well. Yes.
Yes, we're, uh, we, we're, there are, there's a judge and two, uh, police officers here. We can't, uh, we can't be talking about a cover up.
No, I'm not talking about a cover up. I'm saying if somebody else was, and I mean, who's other, who else's ass is gonna be on the line here?
It's gonna be everybody in this room.
Yeah, everybody in the room and, and Tom.
Well, we're talking, so, we're all gonna lose our job.
No, if we.
Uh, no.
Do this correctly, if that is true, that she's stolen money, if we do this correctly and people, everyone in the city sees that we've dealt with it in the right way.
Yeah, yes.
I think we'll be fine.
Yes, I have, uh, notes from every city council meeting I've been a part of, and that does include budget requests, so. They can see our side of it. We can be transparent.
Yeah, yes.
Can all be transparent, then this all goes away and everything's fine.
Yeah, yes, right. Well, that's, uh, that's, uh, that's. Sounds like Suzie's fucked.
Well, we, uh, it's, uh, we don't know if, uh, if it is, uh, what's happened, but, uh.
Yeah, yes.
If it is, then yes, uh, I, I would say you probably would be right.
All right. Well.
Should we, uh, should we adjourn?
Yes, I think so.
I think so.
Been, uh.
Yeah.
An interesting one, for sure.
Yeah, yes.
For, for, for attending, uh, even though everything all good moved around. It's nice to be back in a familiar place.
Yes, of course.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, shall I?
Uh, Roger Luchok, uh, whilst we were in the meeting, uh, Logan has told me that somebody came into the hospital and asked if she wanted anything, uh, harder drug related at the hospital, uh, was apparently trying to sell her coke. Uh, he was. And I'll get the description.
It's, um, I'm sort of a jury all the hard.
Sorry?
Sort of the all the hard work you've put into your, um, anti-drug campaigns been sort of overshadowed by, by this.
Yeah, yes, right.
Somebody worked, you've done that.
Oh, she, thank you, thank you, yes. Well, you know, I was just thought I was gonna begin twenty-five thousand budget, right? But, uh, I guess it, all that work down the drain.
No, I mean, you never know. You never know.
Yes.
You know what the finances are like until we actually dig in and take a proper look.
Yeah, yes, right. And she, you know, the, the, uh, if Suzie is dethroned, so to speak, you know, shoot, I hope the, uh, the next person be able to honor what I was promised, right?
Oh, yes, I certainly hope so.
Yeah, yes. I have faith. I believe.
Yeah, I know what is happening out.
Well, um, yes. Well, anyway, I'm gonna, um, return for now.
Yeah, yes, all right.
My office and, um.
Yeah, yes, of course, so, please.
Coming back then, maybe.
Yeah, yes.
Oh, uh, Henry. Uh, I'm not sure if, like, the lawyer for that person is gonna be right today, but, uh, have you sent the, or the, uh?
Yes, it's all stamped and approved. It should be, it should be on your ops now.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Oh, yes, uh, actually, uh, hold on, uh, how's, how are things going with, uh, the person that shot me? What's the situation there?
Um, last I know that he is still in the hospital unconscious. Let me see if there's any updates.
Hey, Jaffa. Have, have you left? It was quite fun joining the meeting remotely. You've left? Yeah, okay. Oh, dear.
Oh, very well, yes. Okay, so, as I suggested, basically.
I enjoyed having a go at everyone in turn, yeah.
Yes, okay, right, so just, uh, awaiting, uh, I guess.
Oh. There was definitely someone sneaking around before, did you see them?
Yes, I don't imagine, uh.
Yeah, it's just going to be like a sentencing trial more of anything else, you know?
Fair enough. But, okay, thanks for that.
Yeah, no problem.
Apologies, Daniel.
No, that's fine, please.
I, uh, I threw the best, uh, I, 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 I'm curious about some of your attitudes sometimes.
Yeah, yes, right.
You're, uh, I would say you, it's been pretty obvious that, that you, you care about the city and people inside it.
Of course, yes.
When, when, when I see your meetings, uh, you're speaking with people and, and of course, I, I very vividly remember your, your cries as, uh, as I was being shot. So, you're, you're a person that cares about, uh, about how things run, about people being safe, yes?
Of course, yes. Thank you, thank you for saying so.
So, it makes me curious to think that sometimes, uh, you know, some of the, the takes you have just.
Right.
Seem to not, not really align with that same side of you.
Right, if this is a buyout, uh, you know, going in a bed for the mayor just now.
Yes.
I mean, uh, you know, I, 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 you're right about all that, that, them things you just say it, but I also am very loyal, man.
Well, I suppose that depends on, like, if you're more loyal to one person or, or, or to everyone, that, that you, you, you care.
No, everybody. I mean, the people, you know, you do good by me, I'm gonna do good by you, shit. And that ain't a prerequisite, but I mean, shit, you know, May has been good to me. And I mean, I believe in second chances as well. So, what if, okay, she's embezzling, right? Taking money from the city and, uh, being literally responsible with it, right? Because she's terrified. Oh, everything she's been through, making her do things she ordinarily wouldn't do, right? I think, uh, she deserves my support and, uh, a second chance at forgiveness.
Forgiveness, yes, but, uh, it's extremely illegal and, you know, damaging to, to the whole city and everyone inside it. If that was the case, Daniel, this would be horrific.
Yes, but I mean, uh, if we can get everything restored to how it was, then it's fine for the city. If we can get.
How are you supposed to know that they're not gonna just take more? Or, uh, there, there's no level of trust.
I believe in second chances. I don't believe in third chances, right? I think it's, it's my duty at this point to fight for the mayor. She's been good to me. She's been good to all of us. She's been through a lot and it looks like she's made some pretty, pretty, uh, pretty big mistakes, right? Out of fear and, and terror.
She almost fired us both on a drunken whim.
No, no, she's fired me like three times, right? She don't, uh, you know, she's, I mean, so, she's, she's, uh, she could be a little kinder, she could be a little, a little more, uh, fairer. I get that for sure. But I mean, nonetheless, uh, I think if, if I don't wanna say the word cover up, but if she can get things back to how it should be, you know, there don't gotta be this whole controversial, uh, I mean, the whole public would have to learn about that. How are they ever gonna trust this again?
I vote by being honest.
Oh, look, we've ratted out, we've ratted out the, the, our leader. Look at us, everybody. We've ratted her out. You can trust us? We eat our own. I don't know, Henry, I don't know.
What, do you think they prefer to think, to, to prefer just not to know that they're doing any of these scheming things and then just go on about their lives?
As long as it's made right, like I said, I believe in a second chance. Cause I mean, I don't know if, if, uh, a controversy like that, a massive, uh, making a public that a massive betrayal, public trust has been massively betrayed. It's gonna work out and.
No, not by us, by, by the mayor.
No, by proxy, no. I think uh, we all, you know, she's the head, we, we're all different components of the same machine.
Yes, we have responsibility to, to, to the people, to the city, with the city council, not the mayor's council.
And we would be, we would be honoring that, right? We'd make everything whole again. And the mayor, shit, well, maybe she don't run for election.
Yes, maybe she's uh, she, she quietly decides to take a quieter life.
Yeah, yes. And we're whole controversy avoided.
I don't think she'd like to do that very much.
Well, I mean, uh, this is me thinking about how can we give her a chance at redemption, right? She don't wanna take it, she don't go to. And I think she, it could work out, it would work out for the best for everybody. I, uh, as a member of the public, as a former member of the public, I don't know how, how well I'd take that news. I think I would be, uh, I would uh, very quickly become very anti-government.
That is your role in the, in the council, I suppose. Your opinion does uh, hold weight.
Yeah, yes. I'm not talking about letting her get away with it. I'm just thinking, thinking, you know, she'd opt to clear. And from a, from a position of loyalty, which I do hold very dear, maybe it's a little more grey than we're, than we're thinking about right now.
Let's uh, let's see how the audit comes up. We can uh, take it from there.
Yeah, yes.
The action before the audit would be uh, if anything, just proving the people on birdie, correct?
Yeah, yes, right. Well, it sounds like the ball's in motion and uh, you know, could, could go either way, shit.
Yes, we'll uh, we'll have to wait and see, I suppose.
Yeah, yes.
In your presentation today, though, it's uh, all very summed up very well.
Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you very much, sir. I put a lot of time and effort into that.
Yes, of course, it shows, it shows.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Right, well, I'll, I'll walk you out.
Oh, yes, thank you, sir. I mean, it feels good to be back here, don't it?
Yes, something grandiose about it. Well, I'm here pretty often, but uh, it's normally quite uh, just uh, me and the receptionist.
Oh, yeah, yes, right. I love them stained glass windows up there.
Yes, it's just all so uh, so reflective and pretty.
Yeah, yes, yeah, yes. And I mean, it's safe. I feel safer here than I do probably anywhere else except the church.
As do I, well, uh.
Yeah, yes. Well, you go shelter shit in the church, yeah, yes.
Yes, I, I, I'm comfortable with this being my workplace. When you come out, it's a nice day, flags are waving, it's all quite nice.
Yeah, yes, right. No, I love it up here and the, I mean, um, you know, Suzie's just gotta fall in love again with it. They, it ain't a place of trauma, it's a place of uh, unlimited possibilities.
I've already returned back to the church and I actually felt that did help.
Oh, yeah, it's fantastic. Well, I mean, uh, you know, I think I, from a human level, maybe I'll to speak with the mayor yourself as a, as a, somebody who's lived through an awful, awful trauma. You know, assassination attempt.
I was definitely hoping to, but uh.
Yeah, yes.
With all the, the recent attitude, I'm not sure if you'd want to see me.
Yes, that's a good point.
Ah, this weather really is quite special, isn't it?
Quite nice, yeah, yes.
No, I, I find myself being quite jealous of your uh, your convertible car. Maybe I should get one myself.
Oh, you do, absolutely must, so. I mean, it's a pain in the ass when it's snowing or raining, but I mean, uh, you know, you deal with that.
I still have my big Range Rover anyway, so I could uh, always uh, use that in the winter, but.
Oh, yes. There you go, yes. Oh, I couldn't recommend the Mignons enough.
No, I'd love to have a look, yes, it's also quite long.
Yes.
Style about it, doesn't it? A classical style.
Yes, that's right.
Yes, I think I might do that, do that now, just uh, a little look.
Oh, shoot, yeah, it's lovely. Why not, right? Little splodge.
Of course, uh, wha- what about you? Have you had a lot of things on?
Have I about, sorry?
You have a, a lot of things on, you have a lot of things to do.
Alright, now, uh, I don't know, actually, maybe a few messages I gotta get back to. Well, what do you, uh, what do you suggest?
I wouldn't mind a second opinion on, on the whole car, right?
Oh, yeah, it's alright. Yeah, so I could do that, huh, so?
Hello.
Um, no, but I saw a post on thirty after, yeah, Ryan. How dare you say that I say you kill him? Sounds like Henry has to, has gotta go. No good psychotic, really, he wants to finish the job. Oh, yes, right. Well, I know that means a reporter as well. I've asked him if uh, he can find out any information on, on gossip guys, gonna let me know.
Set, set them against each other.
Yeah, yes, right.
Very curious.
Yeah, yes. Mate, well, I actually didn't think that I had set them against each other. What if we pay the man to uh, oh.
I mean. Having to put this competition out of business.
Yeah, yes.
Didn't think we'd need to pay, you know, just to give them something, something.
Yeah, yes, right.
Hello, sir.
Oh, so I'm, Ross, right?
That's the one. Do you know that man who works on the employment desk is single?
I'm, I'm not sure. Uh, I, I don't think so.
I think he is, right? I think he might be. I could put in a good word. I think he does, if, if I'm catching what you're throwing down.
Well, if you could put in a good word for me, then.
Oh, shoot, I'm a habit to, please, I'm a habit to.
She's telling me you're a journalist, by the way.
Oh, yes, I bet, I bet, right?
Let's see, I've uh, brought rivers dry.
Oh, right, well, you know, I'm quite the matchmaker, so uh, leave it to me, right?
That would be marvelous. Anyways, what are you up to today?
Oh, shoot, we're just, you know, we're really scratching our heads, this mystery of who is this uh, gossip guy? Oh, shoot, I really. I, I was reading his articles, right? It's the, that, can he asshole came rough as shit, right? What do you think?
Yeah, so most of it's just made up.
Yeah, yes.
Far as I know, he takes submissions, is that not so?
He takes.
Any, any number of people.
Oh, right. Oh, you think uh, eh, the gossip guy ain't personally writing all this stuff?
I should imagine it's most of it, but as I say, he was hawking for submissions. He even asked me if I'd make some submissions.
Oh, right.
I told him where to stick it, of course.
Oh, how did he?
No, no, no integrity for that.
No, exactly, right? How did he contact you? Do you mind my accent?
No, he uh, he got hold of me on one of the anonymous chat messages, uh, message.
Okay. You ain't got a number or anything like that?
Unfortunately not.
Yeah, yes, right. Well, how do you feel? Sorry.
He did however point me to a very important source, which I've uh, spoken to my editor about and they seem very interested. It's not only about who he is, of course, but it's interesting about the corruption he puts forward. But as you say, there are legitimate ways of going about these things.
Oh, he's trying to go about it illegitimately?
Well, I shouldn't imagine that posting everything on birdie is gonna get him very far when it comes to the national courts.
Yeah, yes, right, I see. Well, I mean, what if for?
Much of it was slanderous.
Yeah, yes. I mean, how does, I mean, eh, so you're, I mean, as, as a journalist, I'd be, you know, surely you believe in ethics and uh, standards and practices, all this kind of thing.
Well, I'm with Weasel News, so I wouldn't necessarily go that far, but yes, one has to, one has to work in the sunshine rather than in the shadows, if you catch my drift.
Yeah, I get you, right?
You've got to have respect for journalism because they cite their sources and uh, they're open and honest and they tell you good real news.
Yeah, yes. And very competitive.
We strive towards. We don't always get it right.
Of course. And I mean, the fact that you strive towards it's admirable, right?
Well, as I say, it's only Weasel News. It's not the Daily Globe or anything, but I'm working my way up.
Well, that's, that's.
Half past gossip column.
Oh, please, no comparison, right? And I mean, it's quite competitive, eh, ain't it?
It can be, it can be, but I make a stipend.
Right? Well, shit, I mean, uh, so I mean, you, you, you rely on people coming to you for, you know, juice a story popping up here and there, but it might be a tip off, right? And not necessarily something you uh, stumbled across yourself.
We usually combine the both, you see. People will tip us off about certain things and then we go through the proper channels to find out what we can.
I see.
Have access to the police department or don't always give them the time of day, whereas the commissioner and I are on a reasonably social basis, which means that if I have anything to ask him, then he knows that he's gonna get a lot of trouble if he uh, if he doesn't respond.
I see. And I mean, how you would, I mean, if I came to you with an anonymous uh, tip off, you know, you ain't gonna cite me as a source, right? You would do your own due diligence and uh, put out something there based on your own findings, right?
Indeed, indeed, yes. We have had a couple of anonymous submissions, people who have wished to remain anonymous after having made those submissions. And generally, we follow it up for them.
Right, who were they?
Well, the point is that they were anonymous, my dear.
And there it is, you just pay us the tares, right? Well, I got a bit of a juicy story for you.
Well, I would imagine that on the steps of the town hall is probably not the best place to share it. You never know who's listening, no offence, of course, my dear.
No, that's, that's true. I mean, it is very hard.
Man, for example?
Oh, please, with my laugh, oh god.
Forgive me if I don't stick my own personal reputation on your sense of personal judgment, my dear.
No, no, I don't, I don't expect you to, right? I mean.
I would, I would like to hope that most people would think I'm trustworthy.
Well, he's a judge, right?
That about themselves, my dear. That is where I come in.
Well, it's also a thing of uh, where do you draw a line between, okay, I got a journalistic uh, responsibility here, I gotta do things with integrity and you know, fi- get to the bottom of things and all the rest. Where do you draw the line between that and uh, well, shoot, networking with one of the most powerful men in the, in the town? Getting on the good side of the judge and then city councilman.
My job is not to be on their good side, it is to have a working relationship with them. There is a subtle but important difference, my dear.
So that, but there's a.
I don't have good and bad sides, Daniel. I think people just uh, are what they are.
Yeah, yes, of course.
Sometimes you have to suck a few cocks, sometimes you've gotta piss a few people off. Depends what the story is, I suppose.
Yeah, yes, right.
Very, very different from, from my trade, I must say.
Yeah, yes.
Equally satisfying in many ways.
We ain't talking about actually uh,
And if you are, that's fine. That's absolutely fine.
Back in Liberty City, when I was seconded there for a few years, yes, I admit that I did. Thankfully, the necessity hasn't presented itself just yet.
Oh, right.
Yeah, well.
Oh, shoot.
Don't do anything you're, you're not comfortable with, of course, you know?
Oh, anything goes by me, my dear. You should know that.
Alright.
Most of the cubicle doors in this city by now.
I don't use public lavatories very often.
So would you, would you be willing to uh, try, let's say, I don't know, sexual favors for, shoot, I don't know, a, a complete uh, smear of somebody's character?
You know what? I think I might be finished this conversation.
I would take the smear for free.
Oh, right.
Nice to meet you.
You too, sir.
Oh, yes, goodbye, goodbye, Henry.
It'd be yours.
Did he just call me, did he just call me large, just? Excuse me?
What about you? Would it be you?
Oh.
Are you putting yourself?
The sexual favors? No, 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 no. As you understand, you know, I'm, I'm a priest, right?
Eh, well, I've, I've heard rumors, my dear.
Oh, yeah, you said, oh, they're all bullshit, right?
Again, that, that very much is my job.
Yeah, yes, right. Well, uh, I ain't uh, eh, eh, you know, I was kinda hoping Henry would, would volunteer, but uh.
You were hoping that Henry would volunteer for what exactly?
I'm sorry, I, I saw you got your phone out there a moment ago. Can I ask you what you was doing on your phone just now?
Yes, I received a text message.
Right, you ain't recalling me anything like that?
Unfortunately not.
Oh, god, unfortunately not. Well, this is all off the record, I'm sure you understand.
If I might be so bold, you haven't really said anything of any national or newsworthy importance, my dear.
Way I'm getting to that.
Go on.
So this is all off the record, right? You can't use anything outside.
Perhaps you'd better come with me.
Well, I can't do any sexual favors or nothing like that.
I don't think that would be necessary in this case.
Right. All these are wheels, huh?
What do you think?
Oh, it's a nice car, shit. This is a tornado.
Forgive the um, necessity for discretion, it's just that the walls have ears, especially around the city council.
Oh, yes, right. Well, listen, right? All off the record, right? I'm just inquiring as uh, as to, well, you, you know, your services, right? Well, my mind can, I'm just gonna cut the bullshit, right? This is my main concern and I'm wondering if you can help me out here. I mean, I already touched on it up at the Bama Mamas, right? We need uh, need to find out who this asshole is. I'm wondering how dirty you're willing to apply to find out.
And why do you need to find this man? Presuming it is, of course, a man.
Yes, well, well, uh, he calls himself Gossip Guy, which, which, I mean, uh, who knows, right? Could be trying to throw himself the sand, like Gossip Girl. I believe it was a guy the whole time. I never watched it, but uh, I believe it was a guy. Spoilers. I ain't sure, anyway. So uh, I'm wondering if uh, well, shit, I don't know, maybe uh, city council could make it a little worth your while to, to take additional steps to find out who this is. And I mean, you got the common ground of being a journalist. So perhaps there's, there's a uh, an angle there for you to approach from.
Do you not see that he might be on my side in that regard?
Yeah, yes, of course I do. Is he?
Well, that depends how you look at it. Well, that depends how you look at it, I suppose. There are those of us who operate in the sunshine, as I say. People such as yourselves.
Yeah, yes.
And there are those who operate in the shadows.
Right.
However,
Okay.
There are our public servants, who abuse the systems of power, which are in their, in their charge, and there are those who hold them to account.
Yeah, yes.
Which side do you think I would stand on that particular war?
Well, my thinking is, uh, money talks, right? Everybody got a price. I mean, yeah, it's very admirable, you're looking out for the best interest of the town, right? As are we, as are we. And I mean, shit, I don't get any extra money for, for the things I do.
And what things are those, my dear?
Well, I, uh, look out for people, I listen to people, I act on their behalf, I represent them. I'm very proud of the work I do for people.
And you're not saying that you have any corrupting influences being placed upon you?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. I'm duty-bound, so. Just looking for the right path to take.
And you feel like that might be paying off a journalist to find a man?
Well, yeah, yes. Of course, anything I can do. What's that asshole doing? He just took a folder.
Sir? Sir?
I can't be seen. Oh, shit! Let him go, let him go. Crazy asshole, you okay?
Yes, I think I recognize him from the Daily Globe.
Oh, see doggy dog out there, huh?
Hmm. Well, thankfully, I wasn't eating your dog, so it won't cause too much of a scandal.
Oh, yeah, it's right, imagine that.
I'd rather not, if that's okay.
Yeah, of course, right.
So, as I was saying-
Yeah, yes, please.
Let me just double-check that I have this right here. So you're proposing to pay me off, presumably off the books, to use any inside knowledge that I, as a journalist, might have, to find a man who's causing you issues legitimately?
Yeah, it's, I don't know if be off the books, I mean, I ain't asking you to do nothing legal now.
I believe that what you are asking would be illegal.
To find out the identity of, of a criminal?
Yes, as I'm sure you understand, there is no imperative reason for us to find this person. They're not causing a present danger to anybody in-
Yes, yeah, yes.
Public life.
Yes, yeah, yes. He's dogs the mayor, he's completely dogs the mayor, and he's-
The mayor's address is a matter of public record, my dear.
He's stalking the mayor, right? He's stalking who?
That would be, that would be a matter for the police.
Yes, exactly. Police don't know who he is. I'm, what I'm, what I wish to do is find out who this asshole is and tell the police. Take whatever evidence I can gather, take it to the police. I ain't no fishing, I ain't no funny business going on.
I would say that this is both fishing and funny business, my dear.
Ain't illegal, pretty sure.
Yeah, I believe it is, sir. I'm a-
I don't know.
I hate to school you on public matters, but this would be illegal. For journalists to look into the private life of a private citizen who does not pose a present threat to any of the members of the public is not our call.
I believe it is, I believe it is. The only reason I've come to you is because the common ground of being journalists, I thought maybe you knew, knew the person, right? And, uh, and he's also slanderizing the mayor. All these things he's saying, none of it is true, and he ain't got any proof. And if he does, he's gonna have to, I want him to take it to court and prove that he's got the, got the, uh, proof, or go to jail, right, for the pain and suffering he's causing this lady. May has been through a lot, you wouldn't believe it. Okay? Now she's been harassed by this person, and I'm, I just wanna find out who it is and try to understand why they're doing that. And shoot, if they're, if what they're saying is true, they'll be able to prove it, right? And then, shoot, I can't do nothing but accept it.
Okay. Let me put it this way.
All right.
Officially, on the record-
Yeah, yes.
This is a matter for the police.
Yeah, yes.
Off the record, if I had any information, let's say hypothetically,
Yeah, yes.
I will get in contact with you. I will expect a very good reason to share it with you, however.
Yeah, yes.
If I make myself clear.
Crystal.
In such a position, what would you be able to offer me to make it worth my while?
I think, uh, if you're able to provide a first and last name, I'd be, I'd be willing to move a few things around, get you two grand. If you can get us a phone num, if you can get us a phone number on top of that, we talk and fall grand.
And do you feel that four thousand dollars would be sufficient for what would essentially be the sake of my professional reputation?
Well, that's for you to decide, right?
I should make the decision now for you.
Okay.
Absolutely not.
All right, well, what we talking?
It would need to be closer to twenty.
Closer to twenty, okay. I can, I can go to a CX, but that includes number, first name, last name. Shoot, I could go to eight if you can get me the location of the bastard.
Do I look like a cunt?
Excuse me?
Do I? Because I feel like I'm being treated like one, my dear.
You ain't, no, I don't think you look like a cunt. Well, I grant to, to put the man in my reach, just I asked the man a few questions.
I don't think you seem to understand. You think I would be able to work again in this city as a journalist?
Yes, I do. Who's got to know?
My entire professional reputation would be irredeemably destroyed.
Who's to know? Who's to know it was you?
Well, the Gossip Guy himself, for one.
Right? I don't know.
And this is a man who has made his living out of posting, uh, posting the personal details of everybody else all over social media.
So you fear this person?
I know what their skills are, and I'm acutely acquainted with the framework that they work in.
Right?
What I'm saying is that if this ever got out, it would be the end of me. And I think you and I both understand that I have other public duties.
I really don't think I can go anywhere near twenty, I, I mean-
Well then, I'm afraid that I won't be able to help you out.
You, you said to me earlier, if you find anything out, you'd be able to call me and let me know, that I would, you said I would be the first person to know.
Hmm.
Otherwise-
Yet, here we are, my dear. Here we are.
Well, otherwise, you got this competitor out there, right? Causing all this stuff, and you don't get eight thousand.
Are you, are you suggesting that you're going to be giving the eight thousand to the Gossip Guy?
Absolutely not, but you wouldn't get it.
That's fine by me. This is a, this is a person which is being absolutely chased down, hounded, I would, I would say, by the public officials in this town. People like that don't tend to last long, especially with gentlemen such as yourself in the picture, my dear.
Yeah, yes, thank you. So, why not make an extra eight grand?
You don't seem to understand.
Right?
I think, I think this conversation is over, my dear. If you've got some more money to offer me, then we'll talk.
Let me get back to you, I don't think I can go anymore than that, but let me see what I can do, all right?
Pleasure speaking, my dear.
All right, pleasure's all mine. Thank you for your time, sir, and good luck with the, uh-
Let me know when you've changed your mind.
I'll see what I can do, but I'm, I mean, dang it! Oh, fuck! Yeah, it's a long story. Don't tell him you gave me lift. Get away from him as fast as possible. Speak soon. Glad you're okay. Um, dangerous. Um, I'm sorry, but he seemed like a bit of a asshole. Oh, yeah, I gotta get a fucking lawyer. Okay. Your Dynasty Eight, we've gone electric. Hornies is closed. Thanks to Panalad Hornies for filling me up. Uh, Gina. Toby and Gina. Um, Spanxie. Okay. We can't go to Pizza Days. Oh, we can. Oh, my god, fucking out of my way. Hey, blood, there, how you doing? That reporter kinda talks like Gossip Guy tweets, just saying. Oh, he's Gossip Guy, is he? Maybe. Oh, I wish he knew you, you said that. Uh, it's, uh, I can get some petrol up near Hornies. Set it out of the way. Go down past the pizza shop. Stairs big wooden stick. Oh, god. Uh, there's people here. Gotta get some petrol. Let's see if I can at least get a pizza. Yes, yes. All right. Jen, how you doing? Hello, hello? I saw Clem was just around. How you doing? Just had an interesting, uh, chat with Willie Goose.
Hi, hi, how you doing?
Hi, so.
Hi, how you doing?
Oh, shit, yeah, it's good. How's, how's the wife and kids?
Who's, wait, what do you mean? You sarcastic?
No, I'm doing the-
You making fun of me because I'm single?
No, I didn't, I actually didn't know you were single, I'm just, no, I'm just doing the whole, you know, oh shit, running into your, uh, like at the shops, right?
Someone else did that to me. It was the worst thing ever happened, so please don't.
Oh, shit, all right. William, it's good to see you, right?
Yeah, sure.
All right, I'm gonna try to get myself a pizza.
Yeah, hold on, do you, do you know who, uh, who Gossip Guy is? It's not you, is it?
I ain't me, I've been trying to figure out who it is.
All right.
Ain't illegal for me to fi, try to find out, right?
Yeah, can I search your book for a Gossip Guy magazines?
No, you may not.
I'm only joking.
I know. You could if you want, but no, okay. Well, as soon as I find out, I'm letting y'all know, so you can arrest him for slanderizing the mayor and dogsing her.
Well, apparently it's quite obvious.
Well, who Gossip Guy is?
I am not gonna tell you my source, but a person said it was very obvious who it is.
Right, and?
I have no idea.
You go to any theories?
Uh, no, I've never, I, I couldn't even remotely tell who it is.
Right, and where, tell me who- Sorry?
I said maybe that donkey person, because they hated me, all right?
Oh, you know what, he's, you're probably fucking right. Oh. That does seem pretty obvious when you, oh.
Aye, but the person who told me it was obvious said, no, that's not who it is.
Right, well, who was that?
I'm not gonna tell ye. It's just, I'm liking me.
Well, hint at it, right? You don't have to tell me, just kinda hint.
I'm not, I'm not gonna do that. See you later.
Oh, the plonk. Yeah, I was on his clam for half an hour or so, feeling a bit rough, are you? What are you, um, bit under the we, weather? The sooner you and Plonger are in a buddy comedy together, the better. Get away from there, please. Oh, don't say that, please.
Well, I thought I had a peeping tom or something.
I'm just, kinda peeping tom stands at a window waving.
I don't know.
Well, I didn't wanna get in a- I didn't want any unpleasantness, right? I just wanted to, uh... Is it alright if I get a pizza?
Yes, just keep it very subtle and quiet, please.
Alright. Pepperoni, salami, please, and meatballs and, uh... And, uh-
Meatballs?
Pineapple.
No, Daniel, you know we don't do that. I can bring you a salami out.
Salami and, uh, beer or something, please. I'm very, very, very low on blood sugar.
Okay, I will, I'll be speedy then.
Oh, thank you, ma'am.
Are you like desperate? Because I do have a cheeseburger on me.
Oh, no, please, just give me a pizza, right? I'll pay you double.
Oh, sorry, I thought you meant, please, can I have that back?
Oh.
Okay, I'll go and make it now.
Hang on. There you go.
Right, I'll be right back.
Please.
You stay, stay out here.
Yeah, yes, I know. Okay, Ian?
Yeah, you know what? I know Frankie was being arsey about it, but I don't really give a shit, so you can stand on this bit.
Alright, thank you, ma'am. Oh, oh, you won't, right? A boy, uh... Yeah, my manual leaves, I immediately feel ill, which is what always happens when I have time off, typical. How long you got off? Life is so unfair, tell me about it. I've done quickly to give a top-notch apology to J C, right? What for? I'll for- Been, um... What about the cheatum stuff? Right, yeah. Well, I hope you feel better.
Hey.
Hi, hi, Luchok. Any leads on this gossip guy asshole?
We're working on it, yeah.
Yeah, it's right. Yes, I'm trying to, I've been axing around, see if anybody knows who he is.
Cool, cool. I see a lot of people saying out here.
Well, yeah, it's, I'm kinda false to you.
You're forced?
Yeah, it's, well-
Why?
Well, Josie gets in trouble, uh, if she lets me inside.
Oh, right.
I don't wanna get into trouble.
Well, at least you can sell easier, I guess.
Yeah, it's, well, as long as, uh, Nance ain't around to chase me off. She ain't in there, right?
Oh shit.
Got a good chunk of time off, gonna get, uh, get some movies watched that I've neglected. Nice, what's on the list? Yeah, feel better soon, yeah. Please do. Stressed heavily that Clementine has just been, uh, a bit O T T. But J C isn't in town, I'm putting cheatum through it. Thanks, you guys, and the kind of rough where you can enjoy it a bit, not full ill. Yeah, yep, yep, good, good. Mentioned, oh, fuck, fuck, yeah, I would... Basically, every time I've seen Luchok. I've been meaning to say, you know any good lawyers? Oh, shoot, Luchok, shoot, I'm, I'm, I'm a desperate need of a lawyer, I mean, I don't know who to ask, right? Do y'all know anybody, or... He's like, who ain't cheatum, right? I just use cheatum, but I can't use him because he's, uh... Working for Nance, right?
Uh, yeah, I think they have a couple other lawyers working there.
Oh, yeah, shoot, bro. Yeah, yes. Shoot, guys, I need to, uh... Oh, excuse me a moment, please. What? You got my pizza?
Yes.
Alright, what do I owe you?
What do you think you should owe me?
Well, what are they, seventy, they're seventy five a pole, bro.
Yeah, and then it's forty for the beer.
I'll give you two hundred, yeah.
Deal. Card?
Oh, yes, if your thing reaches out here, okay, that's easy.
Yeah, it's Bluetooth.
I ain't toxic, alright. I should have paid cash now, Nance is gonna see my name on the, uh-
Don't worry, she never really checks this stuff.
Alright.
Enjoy.
Oh shit, thank you, ma'am, you're saving my life.
Good, good. Make sure you eat.
Yeah, it's alright, thank you, ma'am. Alright, sorry about that, so.
Oh, no, that's okay. So, there's a lot going on, um...
Alright, yeah, it is.
Yes, looking for a lawyer?
Yeah, it is. So, uh... So I might, uh, I message the, uh... The services I have, the other day. I don't think I heard anything back. Oh, maybe I did, hang on. No, I ain't heard anything back yet, I might just try them again and, uh... See if anybody's, uh, able to... Get a time, organize a time with me.
Yeah, I'm sure they can do that.
Yeah, it's alright. Alright, shall they? Alright, well, thank you, sir, I'm like, what a fucking die, huh?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, it is.
It's been something.
Sure, hey, it's.
Look, guys, source it, though.
Yeah, it is, I have faith. I'm sure it's, uh, just a big misunderstanding, right?
Well, let's hope so, but you know, if it hasn't, then we'll be, we're gonna deal that like we discussed.
Yes, of course, of course. Yeah, yes, alright. Okay, well, thank you, so, well, I guess, uh, I'll be seeing you. Yeah, we'll see how this all plays out.
I'll see you, right?
Alright, bye-bye now. Um... Saw Baby Girl the other day, gonna see Nosferati tomorrow. That's the guy who did The Lighthouse, isn't it? Wanna re-watch Barry Lyndon? I've still not seen, that's the one Kubrick movie. Ah. One of the major Kubrick movies I've not seen. I've not seen some of his earlier stuff. Uh, and pick through my Letterboxd watch list. Everyone get on Letterboxd, interesting. Things very rich and cheating, got put through the wringer for a misunderstanding, but Ronnie can attempt to sling his mate around town and nearly end up married. It's a Baby Girl bit that was very Verity with Ronnie. Kinda wanna see Baby Girl just for the soundtrack, the composer's my favorite, who's that? Yes, but Verity is, uh, dick-matized, he can do anything to hurt J C's farm or discerning. Hey, comrade, how you doing? Been working through a bunch of 2024 films I never get around to, been a bit ill since the weekend, Letterboxd forever, interesting. I'll have to get on it. Um... Yeah, I've not seen shit lately. The other night, uh... Um... I watched, uh, it was, it was my, uh, when was it? Monday, Monday, I turned, I turned forty on Monday, can you believe that? And, um... We had some lovely Thai food for dinner, and then we watched, uh, The Meg. And I fell asleep at the end. I've already seen it, though. Um... Composer is Cristobal de Villa, guy who does the White Lotus music. Ah, no shit, cool. Yeah, not overly familiar, probably except for the White Lotus stuff. So good, writing your silly little review after a movie is the best bit. Ah, cool. I wanna go read a bunch of your reviews. Dick-matized by a hypothetical dick, the dick that was promised. Excuse me. Fish, how you doing, mate? Happy, uh... Berry, Beereth Day? Thank you very much. The Meg, The Meg is fucking so cool. I love a bit of hate watching, but seen, uh, but been watching some pretty good stuff, yeah, yeah. God, The Meg is the best. I think The Meg is special because it, um... It's exactly what it tries to be. Okay, I'm not stopping here. Alright. Well, like, should we just give him a, should we just be a fucking hostage? Nothing else going on right now. Although it looks like they might be finished. Um... Yeah, The Meg, it's like they, it's exactly the type of movie they've, they've tried to make. Like, it's very... Uh, intention, uh, not doing a great job of explaining it. Yeah, I think they might be done. Alright, boo. No, alright.
Yo, me.
Yes, hello. Oh.
Uh...
Shoot.
Come and meet, eh?
Oh, no, I'm just headed home, thank you.
You got, you got a... You got a nap to catch, just big sleep.
No, no, I just, uh, don't wanna come with you, right? Why?
Well, that's, that's crazy, because if you don't come with us, you know, this baseball bat's going through your skull.
Oh, no, please, hold on, boy!
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought.
No, please! Just let me go, right? Just please!
Get it, come on.
Why are tea?
Head this way.
Oh, no! Not again, I'd- I can't get in there! Oh, it's fucked, huh?
It is fucked, yeah.
What if the police come by, right? You willing to... Go to jail?
Have you, have you contacted the police for them to come by or no?
No, what do you want from me?
Then that's fine.
Oh! What are you doing?
This is none of your business, mate. There you go.
No, no, please!
I've already told you what happened if you do.
Oh! It's squished back here, right? I can't move. If I put my arms down, it might be better, but I feel like I might pop out if I press X, anyway. These really good Utopia soundtrack from years back is really good. I think I saw the first episode of Utopia. Is that where it starts off, in the comic book store, and he puts the gas on the guy's face? Been enjoying, uh, reading comrades reviews lots, are you? I'm a good reviewer, a really good one, yeah. I feel like that's what a lot of my reviews are. Oh, it's really good. So good. Can't remember if I actually have a Letterboxd, I think I joined probably by a man, right? Not again. We're looking at case, uh, to show Ruth's lawyer character that ropes. One of the photos in the case is Woodcock as a hostage with a huge black eye on the phone. Yeah, that's... Where the fuck, what are they doing? They're gonna look for a car, maybe. So, this is their car, I should try to memorize the, uh... Play it. Where are we? Can I get out, please? It was perfect, what happened here? Why are there GBH charges on this case? Oh, shoot, hang on. MB71IUB. Where are we going? MB71IUB. So I'm gonna write that down. Excuse me? Oh, please!
Don't worry, we won't have you long. Be home safe and sound in a little bit.
What was it? This ain't a week!
That's a wig, that's crazy.
This ain't a week!
Are you sure, mate?
It ain't, pull on it, right? Pull my hair. No, pull my hair, please. It ain't a week!
You might be into that, and I'm not gonna feed into it, you know?
Feet, feet into it, well?
Why are you bringing up feet for?
You said feet, right? You gonna bring your feet into it? Oh, right. Oh, yeah, it's right. No, please! No, please. Listen, Ron, just let me go. It's.
No.
You ain't even done nothing, Ron. It ain't too late. Believe me, y'all don't want to do this, Ron. Whatever you're planning on doing, you don't gotta do this. No, you don't gotta do this, please.
I wanna, I wanna hear your reasons why, mate, why?
Oh, you need reasons? Okay, well, how about this one? Jesus.
Who's that?
You know damn well who Jesus is.
I've never met a fella named Jesus in my life.
Yeah, yes, you have, you just don't even know it yet. Because he's in your heart.
Stalking me? That's crazy.
No, no.
I've got a stalking him, Jesus.
No, no, not in a creepy way, Ron, in like a.
Wait, how do you know man's stalking me?
Excuse me?
Are you stalking me too?
No.
You stalking my pal?
Won't.
Then how do you know another man's, yeah, how do you know another man's stalking me if you're not stalking me yourself?
It's Jesus Christ. Jesus Christ.
Who the fuck is that? I've never let the Jesus.
Son of God, uh, uh, big, the star, the main character in a little book called The Bible, maybe heard of it?
The Bible?
Oh my lord, y'all don't know Jesus? What are we doing here?
Vibing, isn't it?
No, please, Ron. Oh lord, please, everybody get out. Don't hurt these people.
I think you're bitter with the talking. Get down on your knees, big man.
No, please, please. Oh, you're gonna kill me, I know you are.
That would be silly. Absolute freaks, look at them, why aren't they doing anything?
Please call for help.
Is this your man Jesus's work?
Yeah, he said he is. Yeah, he is. He's testing her, he's testing me.
Yeah, no one gives a shit, you've just left there.
No.
Take off your shoes, big man.
No, no, please.
Take them off.
My shoes? What the hell do you want with my shoes?
Hand them over.
Go on, hand your shoes over.
Give me your shoes. Fucking hell, this.
That was a big sniff. That was a big, big sniff.
You wish people were sniffing your feet.
No. Ah, they're my shoes.
Not anymore.
Oh, you bastard. You bastards.
Where's your Jesus now?
No, please, he's right here beside you, right? He's saying, please stop this. He's saying stop it, right? He's saying it ain't too late, right? Y'all can stop.
He's telling me to do it.
No, please.
He said, go on, go on, give this man another test.
No, no, you're lying, Ron, he would never say that. No, no.
I'm, I'm actually here.
No.
Per Jesus's word.
No, 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 I'm basically Jesus, asshole, right?
Talking to me. He's telling me to take your pants.
Won't. Oh, thank the lord, the police is coming.
Take off your pants as well.
Y'all gonna be in trouble, Ron, just.
Take off your pants.
Just.
Come on, mate.
Excuse me?
Take off your pants.
My pants?
Take them off.
Oh, shoot, I gotta, can I take this phone call, please, or else my phone's gonna.
No.
It's a pizza shop lady, oh, she, and my phone's gonna keep ringing if I don't answer it. Can I just answer it and hang up, please?
Fine, yeah.
Oh. I missed, let me just quickly call back and hang up, Ron, or else it's never gonna shut up. Alright.
You've got to put your phone on silent, mate, and then it vibrates and you don't have to deal with the stupid ringing.
Oh, but then I never, I always forget to get back to people.
That sounds like a you problem at that point, isn't it?
Leave me alone.
No.
Hi, I'm with boys.
Oh, leave me alone, man, Daniel, leave me alone.
Lie, lie me alone.
Leave me alone.
Get me out of here, please. I've tried to help him.
I'm, I'm here, I'm here carrying out Jesus's word.
No, no, don't listen to her.
Woodcock, is that you?
This man was walking around, no pants, no shoes, no.
No, they took my pants, they took my.
This is punishment, please, go.
Right.
Officer, they're robbing us, please.
No, I could, I can see that, I can see that, Woodcock, are you okay? Are you injured?
I don't know, I don't know.
Mate, I haven't touched you, come on.
My adrenaline's pumping, Ron.
Don't do that, silly shit. Off to me, are you alright?
They forced me into a vehicle, Ron. They forced me into a vehicle.
Listen, don't worry, don't worry, father, we'll get a full statement from you after the fact, but are you okay?
I think I'm okay, Ron.
Right, okay, alright.
As okay as I can be in this situation. Oh, please, Lord, please, give them the strength to just stop and turn themselves in.
Jesus is the one telling me to do this.
No, she, she's lying.
Are you okay? Because your face is a bit fucked up right now. You look like you've been punched. Seven times.
It's a dangerous job and, no, I'm not okay, but I'll, I'll power on.
Oh, God bless you.
Some crashes.
My face came into contact with some things it shouldn't have.
Oh, that doesn't sound good. Well, you know, I wish you a speedy recovery and that.
Thank you, that's very kind of you.
Yeah, you're welcome, just Jesus's word and everything.
Right, I wouldn't know anything about that, but how can we resolve this as a disaster free as possible?
Get me out of here.
By letting us make our way into, into that vehicle over there.
Okay, so you want three passes to the vehicle behind me?
Yeah, exactly.
Right, okay, alright, I'll, I'll go have a word with my colleagues if you let us know once you're finished doing what you're doing in here.
Will do.
And uh try, try not to, to harm Woodcock, because that would push things eh into a situation we don't want to be in.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just doing what Jesus. I'm just doing what Jesus is willing me to do.
Right, well, let's just make sure Jesus is in a good mood today.
That's Satan. It ain't Jesus, it's Satan.
Alright, I'm just, just don't do anything, I wouldn't do.
Bless up, Maggi.
Okay.
Where's he going?
He's leaving you.
No.
I told you, Jesus, Jesus don't give a fuck about you, he just wants you tested and tested today.
No, you're pushing my buttons now, miss it. Jesus loves me. He would do anything for me.
Yeah, and that's why you're here, isn't it?
He's gonna get me out of this. This is a test.
Oh, uh, I don't know, mate. Go with Judas for shits and gigs.
Judas, alright.
Won't.
Who's another one? Who's the bad guy in The Bible?
Well, I guess the devil.
No, no, I don't want to be called in. Who's, who's the bad guy in The Bible? Tell me.
Well, there's heaps.
Give me, give me one.
Well, all of us. Every single person, we all seen us. That's why Jesus had to die.
Give us a name.
Judas.
We already got that one, big guy.
Oh, dude.
Need a different one.
Satan, right?
Fucking, just call me Lucy, eh?
Oh.
Are you some kind of fake priest or summit? Why can't you rattle off a name off the top of your head?
Because I'm in, in the middle of a hostage situation. Begging you, I can, okay.
Powerful energies of your god almighty be calming you enough that, like, you could use this moment to teach these disciples that have been led astray.
Alright, there's Raphael, right?
There you go, there you go.
There's Matthias. There's uh. Tino.
Tina?
Tino. She's real, real biased.
I certainly know a Tina that's a fucking massive wanker, so, yeah.
Right.
That checks out, actually.
There's uh. Donatello, right?
What, the Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtle?
No, no, that's, no. That's, it's all imitating life. Michelangelo.
Do you have a Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtle?
Excuse me?
Raphael's my favorite Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtle.
No, Michelangelo's everybody's favorite.
No, Raphael's my favorite.
No, no, the pizza with the.
What about you, Lucy? Which, which Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtle is your favorite?
Raphael for sure.
It's fucking Michelangelo, oh, please.
They're jocks.
Everybody. Raphael's a fucking pot of poop and mopey asshole. Oh. Oh, I'm Raphael, I'm so.
No, that's Leonardo.
I have no place, no, Leonardo's the leader.
Yeah, miserable fucker.
No, no. You're thinking of Donatello.
All bad reason that.
Raphael's like, oh, Raphael's emo.
Raphael's cool as shit.
Raphael is. Do you mean Michelangelo, the orange one, right?
Your officer, officer, what's your favorite Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtle?
I don't think I know them.
No, that's crazy, come on.
Oh, come on, you, you was around from the time when they was made.
Who's your favorite inventor? Michelangelo, right?
I, I suppose so, he's did quite a lot.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
If you list me a turtle, I could probably pick one.
If well?
If you list a turtle, I, I could probably.
Right, there's Raphael, Donatello, Leonardo and Michelangelo.
And the guy from uh Antaros, right?
This was a master splinter, but he's not a turtle.
What's the difference between the uh turtles?
Well, they all have different weapons. And Raphael, Raphael's is.
It's so much more than that.
He's the coolest.
He's got forks.
Yeah, he's got, he's got the little, the like ninja things.
Sars. Raphael's the emo, right? Donatello's the brines, Leonardo's like the natural born leader. Michelangelo's like the Bart Simpson of the lot. Everybody's favorite is Michelangelo.
No, Raphael.
Well, if you're emo, you're gonna like Raphael.
Raphael's got the sarswords and they're really sick.
And he's really emo.
Let me just quickly Google and I'll tell you.
Yes.
You're uh. Who am I calling you again? Judas, you wanna take a quick run around, make sure all these things are broken?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I like the look of uh Leonardo here, he looks like a.
No.
Looks like the, the leader, is it not?
He is the leader, yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Proper up his own all, that guy.
He's a natural born leader.
Big CEO energy and.
Leonardo had the, the samurai sword, right?
Yeah, yes.
Whatever it was, yeah.
This is uh, they're rather nifty, I'll say Leonardo if that's okay.
Yeah, that's my opinion, this guy come on, bro.
No, everybody's favorite's Michelangelo, please.
Well, you're wrong, because there's four of us here and you're the only one that's sitting.
And, okay.
Can I make a small? Can I make a smaller demand?
Yes, sir.
Could you ax uh the other two guys, that's who they're favorite?
Yes, sir, I can absolutely do that.
Thank you.
We have one small minor demand, can everybody list their favorite ninja turtle and why? That's uh, one for Leonardo.
Oh, fuck off. Michelangelo's a rad dude with attitude.
Shh, shh, man's talking.
Is that uh anyone else with uh any opinions?
Hey, Ruth, how you doing?
Donatello and her, and a non-committal answer of nobody.
Right, so nobody will speak Michelangelo.
Oh, fuck all, fuck everybody.
Are you saying you got the other officers?
Kill me now.
Yeah.
Didn't anybody say Raphael?
No.
Mate, you've hired, you've, you've just hired a bunch of shit cops.
You ain't got no emails?
None of them said Raphael.
You ain't got no emails on the false? What about Athena? She's kinda emo.
Athena said uh no comment, she, she didn't really like.
Oh, okay.
Ah, that's a bit boring.
Yes, well uh.
Falsor, make a demand that she has to say. Can you make that a demand that she has to say?
Let me uh, let me ask, let me ask again with a bit more force. Uh Athena, they're, they are quite insistent that I, they know which is your favorite ninja turtle, if you could uh look it up.
Yeah, we're gonna kill this guy if she wants it.
Oh, no, please.
That's a joke, that's a joke.
It's not a joke, they're gonna kill me.
I wouldn't touch a fake hair on that head.
That means they're gonna kill me because I only got real hair on my head.
No, no one's gonna die here, Daniel.
I'm gonna die.
You know that, mate?
Excuse me?
Uh, Athena's actually said Raphael there, so you're in luck.
What I'll say, I've said the one emo, yes, well, that's a win for me, y'all.
Right.
I said she's emo, she probably like.
If that's okay. We're uh, we're gonna let you get your car now, if that's, if that's alright?
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect.
Throw him in the slalom.
Ready for it to come out.
Yeah, I'll throw you in the summer.
Right, Daniel, if you wanna get up and walk, walk with me.
Who, moi?
Right, we're gonna go out to the left.
Where my pants, what the, hang on, what'd you do with my pants, asshole?
I never took them off you, you could have put them back on any time.
You fucking asshole, are they out there with my shoes?
Well, you got your pants, you were sitting on them.
Oh, shoot, okay, let me put my pants on.
There's a quick hold up, Daniel.
Alright.
Thank you very much for.
They're coming up now. I, I don't know, I, I caught him now. Where's the stand over there, Dan?
Over there, okay, well, I got some very important information y'all wanna hear sooner rather than later.
Yes, I, I have to interview you now.
Alright. They, they kidnapped me in their real car, that they took out of Breezy Hearts, I can take you to exactly the spot where they parked the car after they kidnapped me.
Right, trying to do that right now?
Yeah, it's alright. Hang on, here's my shoes, hang on. I vaguely remember the spot.
You drive a nice car, it's a nice car.
What the hell? Oh, I thought I was a goner. Oh, this is your car here? Oh, yes, right.
Alright, you put in the uh GPS where we're going.
Fuck, where was it? Okay, I think it was uh. I think it was up around the Varmwood Bowl, right? Yeah, yes, I, I remember a few of the numbers off the uh license plate, but I don't remember the whole thing.
They uh using any names that you put on?
No, they were using obviously fake names, like Lucifer and uh. Judas or something like that. Hey Bobby, doing? I hate to find Woodcock would never did. Woodcock eat his pizza. Not all of it. They took me from the Breezy Heart apartment and then uh drove me up here and stole another car. But I seen them get the car out. And uh from, from the garage at the Breezy Heart, so I'm guessing their name would be on the deed, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think it was up here, wasn't it? Okay, yeah, it was behind here. I think, uh, yeah, keep going round. Okay, keep going round the back here. Okay, and uh I think it's that hatch bay, oh, hang on. Go over, go over to the, towards the building? No, I think it's gone. Hang on, hang on, see. Oh, shoot, sorry. Oh, shoot, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's alright, okay, hang on. Nah, that's not it. No, I think it's gone.
Sure it's not this one?
I'm pretty sure, yeah, yes, it was, uh, like MB7 or something like that, there was a U in it. It was a hatchback, like a, uh, kinda like this, but more souped up, right, with like spoilers on it and, uh, it seemed, seemed to have a lot of, uh, adjustments made to it, modifications.
You say it was this model, but, uh, upgraded, or is it something different?
Yeah, I think it's something different. It was small though, right? It wasn't quite this small, but it was a hatchback, definitely. Too, too dull with a hatchback, but not this one.
I'll, I'll take a picture of this just in case, just so I remember what sort of thing it is.
Oh, yes, okay.
That's, uh, that's still quite useful, that's, that's quite helpful.
Okay. I'm guessing it's been impounded.
Yes, it's, uh, that is possible.
I mean, I'm pretty sure this was the spot.
If I didn't report anything. That, was it, was it black, what you see?
I think it was black, yes, might have had a few different, uh, lights on it. But I think it was, uh, black, mostly black at least. As you can see, that's where we broke through the, uh, side here, see the, uh, boom poles missing?
Right.
Yeah, yes.
That's interesting.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, they did, they obviously didn't, uh, say anything interesting, but, uh, remember?
I don't think so. It was here, wasn't it?
And Judas', uh, the black car.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, he said to be out of it.
Right, where would you, uh, where would you like to be dropped?
Oh, fuck, I could get dropped back at the Breezy Hearts apartments, I'd be very, very grateful, my end soul.
That's the, uh, the main apartment, is that right, the main apartment?
Yeah, yes, down by, uh, down towards PDM, you know that car, car shop?
Yes, yes, I, uh, I know the one.
Okay.
So you, uh, went just to, uh, Susie's house over here?
Yeah, yes, that's right.
What was that like in there?
Oh, it was gorgeous, please, I mean, uh, I mean, it's, uh, ain't a cheap place, that's for sure, but well, you can probably even tell from the outside, right?
A few million or something, I would imagine.
I'd imagine so, yeah, yes. And, uh, I can see, you know, I mean, it's very suspicious.
Yes, it's, uh, it's not something I, I would like to believe that, uh, she's done, but, uh.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, yes, that's right. Innocent till proven guilty, right?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, yes.
I don't want to, uh, do the worst of Susie, she's, uh, she's not been a terrible man.
No, I think she's done a wonderful job, Brian.
Nice, uh, I'll go that far.
Yeah, yes. Alright, yes, this is great, thank you, soul.
Right, can I give you a quick pat down before, uh?
Of course, yeah, yes.
Just for, uh, just for your benefit, in case they've, uh, stuck anything in your pockets.
Yeah, yes, please. Found a disturbing service didn't for the, uh, photo of Woodcock and Pizza, yes.
Those, uh, discharge forms in Daniel, it's got a lot of money there.
Yeah, yes, yeah, yes, quite a, uh, quite a good savings scheme I got, don't I?
Wow, did they not, uh, expire? Put your hands down now.
Thank you. No, I don't think they expire.
Yes. Right. Well, uh, thank you for your statement.
You're very welcome, anything else I can do, give me a call, please.
Yes, you've, uh, you have got my number, haven't you?
I should do, yeah. Let me just double check, I'm quite sure I do though.
Yes, I've, I definitely got yours.
That is Roger Love Kid.
Right. Well, uh, have a, have a good evening.
Yes, you as well, soul. Thanks again.
Did you take your trousers off, Daniel?
They, he forced me to take them off. He said, oh, I don't know, they were fucking with me.
Right, that is odd.
Yeah, yes. Oh, I hope you catch him.
Sounds like we're getting quite close.
Yeah, yes.
Right, uh, get yourself inside and safe.
Alright, thank you, soul. Labeled evidence one. The chuck just said to keep it. Love that Jaycee's making Cheetum graft. Um. Alright, yeah. Don't have any voicemails. That'd be the one where Susie was dead.
Da- Daniel, it's, it's me, it's Verity, Verity Royale. I've got terrible news for you, Daniel. It, it's about Mayor Susie. She, she, she's gone, Daniel. She's gone. The people's princess has been taken from us. Call me back when you get this message.
Very convincing. He's yet to, but a girl can dream. Please get that voice away from me. Why? Mayor's dead, no, no. Nah. No, the mayor got verity to, um, leave that message. Cause she's awful. Hope I gave him enough, uh, information for the car, I was hoping it'd still be there. A lot happened today, yeah. Very funny prank call from ages ago, yeah. Sirens have stopped. I don't know, Cheetum thinks Jaycee seems pretty keen, she used cat emojis, ooh, rare. He just meow, yeah. I think if I stayed here long enough, I'd see the car again, but. Hmm. Can't say Wilson has been doing stuff lately, but something has been going on, but only Wilson really knows, oh. Interesting. What's he got big plans? Clementine in there until she got belligerent, or was the trauma chat the boner killer? Get him! They chase him around the building or something. Just to save face at least. Oh, shoot, sir, you okay?
I'm gonna go rob my car, strip me.
That asshole just kidnapped me.
Okay.
Did they take your clothes?
Yeah, somebody robbed, somebody called me out the car, robbed my clothes and, and I got run over seven times by a different car.
Fucking assholes, you okay?
Just, well, we gave me funky drugs, I think it's a bit, uh.
You're old, you're drunk.
No drugs, he gave me funky drugs. They call per- Percocet.
Oh, shoot, right. Oh, down the highway, child. Well, why didn't they take your gold chain?
I don't know, I have the glasses, the glasses are worth buying as well.
Fucking idiot, yes. Well, that's why they're pulling this sheet, cause they're fucking idiot, yes.
Who, who, what, you got kidnapped? What, I guess it's a jewelry store or something, it's stupid like that.
Excuse me?
What'd you get, what'd you get, uh, kidnapped for?
Uh, they needed an hostage for a robber at the, the jewelry store, they picked me up and just.
You're always going to that jewelry store as hostage.
Oh, right, people need to back off.
Maybe we should start charging.
Oh, yeah, right.
Side hustle.
Alright, I'm eating, just let me, you know, well.
I've heard you already got a side hustle, as it is anyway, you know?
Oh, what'd you hear? Excuse me?
I've heard about, I've heard about that, that's a woodcock and his weed.
Oh, that's baloney, that's bullshit. Hi! That's bullshit! Oh.
Yeah, have a, have a good one.
It's bullshit, Gary.
Yeah, 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 sure.
Who told you that? Listen, hell.
Oh, I'll tell you now, give me a sec, I've got it down in this notepad, give me a sec.
Oh, yes, thank you, soul, thank you. Cause I'd really like to get to the bottom of that.
Yeah, here it is, it's, uh, fuck off.
Oh, that. Ignore the green zone rule and kill him, please. That's right, you're not supposed to, uh, kill people around here, are you? Oh dear. What is going on there? So confused earlier in a good way, but seriously, the shoes. That should please, uh, need calling ASAP. Drumming outside the pub, who needs, uh, us insulting a fickle man's car, unforgivable. It was semi-unpavished, first time was caused, I had injured, uh, oh, I had ignored the shoes when choosing the outfit and the second was just annoy people. I love it. Bear and she's sixty-two. Yeah, Clementine's sixty-two, yeah. Should have told her about the over fifty speed dating at the weekend, so, uh, Clemente's such low self-esteem, thanks to him, she's a fabulous lady, she will find someone. No age issue, age brings class. How old is Cheetum anyway? Yeah, good question. That sounds fine. I think you should investigate. I think he's thirty-eight, yeah, right.
Hey, Paulus.
Yes, hello, uh, I don't know if this is too much help to you, but, uh, if you're still chasing them people, I have just heard a bit of a racket over at the, uh, at the construction site across the road from the Breezy Hearts Apartments, sounded like.
Where are you?
I'm across the road.
I can see you.
Yeah, that's right.
Hey, there you are.
Where are you?
What you doing there?
Well, I heard a commotion over here. Oh, shit.
You sure you're not just hearing construction noise?
No, it sounded like a, uh, like a car was really struggling to get through somewhere, lot of, lot of, uh, loud noises. Metal on metal.
Right. Right, so like, construction noise?
I don't know, it didn't sound like no construction noise I ever saw. Oh, excuse me, soul.
See a lot of noise? It's me!
Oh, it's you, shit. Do I waltz?
Do you see a lot of noise?
No, I heard it, right, it was coming from over there, Plonco.
Right. Okay, from the construction site.
Yes. Went on and on and on.
We'll get our, we'll get our top men or women on it.
Will you?
No, probably not.
I don't see on the radio, get on the radio, tell them!
Okay, okay, eh, I will. Eh, to all units, eh, Woodcock hears some construction noise in a construction site, can we have all units?
No, it sounded like a commotion, tell them.
It sounded like a commotion. O- okay, so we're getting five air ones, isn't that technically air one, two, three and four and five then? And a tank, Christ.
Oh, shit. Do you want to need my help? What can I do?
Hey. Eh, I'll tell you what, if you can go talk, eh, eh, talk to the people who work in that construction site, you need to go all the way up to the top and, eh, evacuate the whole thing.
Alright. Oh, shit. Can you actually, uh? Yeah, one of these does work, doesn't it? Clem's hung up her shagging boots now, she's dedicated to helping the people of the city. Woodcock needs to get a fine for wasting police. His job is to waste everyone, everyone's time. As Clemente Rico's. As Clem met Rico Shea, he loves shagging. Oh yeah, I could see Clem and Rick kicking it off. Heading it off, I always say kicking it off. Um... The ghost in yesterday was accidental, as ever busy lawyer in was helping Daphne. Is that, is that your new character Ruth? Had a lovely time with the ladders here on Purple RP. Oh, really?
Eh, we've had reports of a creepy guy harassing construction workers.
No, that was harassing me.
Oh, oh don't, let me read the, let me read the report, it says-
Right.
Some speaky guy is running about telling us to evacuate because we're making construction noise in a construction site.
Yes.
They really, they said, to be fair, they said speaky about five times in the report, I, I, I narrowed it down to just one.
I, what's that mean?
Speaky, you don't know what speaky means?
No.
It means they respect you.
These guys said that, did they?
Ah, they said, oh, it's someone I respect, he's a speaky. Who was that?
Now they're giving me shit, Plonkoo.
Because you're swearing up to them.
I am not, I'm just trying to talk to them, right? I'm just trying to talk to them, oh shoot, okay. Excuse me?
You're gonna get beat up.
That's right, walk away. Chicken shit.
They said they respect you.
Oh. Yeah, well, that's, well, you can see that, right, that's respect, that's what respect looks like.
Hey, Woodcock, you should call a lot of people speaky.
No. I feel like you set me up. I was born yesterday now.
No, you were born a long time ago, weren't you?
Oh, yes, because I'm like 50 and shit, right?
Fifty in what?
Fifty.
Fifty, you know 100.
No. I'm 36.
Hey, hey, you're 36.
I am, asshole.
36 going on 72.
No, bullshit.
You ever hear that, just for me?
Yeah, yes.
You ever, you ever thought, don't worry about it, eh, right.
Oh.
Fake in construction site, I was winding you up.
Well, they're in there somewhere and they're getting away.
Woodcock, we got everyone.
Oh, you got them?
Eh, like half an hour ago.
Oh. You brilliant assholes! Congratulations, I'm genuinely really happy.
That's what we do it for.
Why you winding me up?
Because you may be the most entertaining person to wind up on this planet.
Oh. Stop it. I am not. You're just saying that.
You absolutely are, you are.
I'll stop it. Oh, you don't mean that.
No, I do mean that. I'm trying to think of who's better. Eh... Maybe... No, I can't think of anyone better.
Right.
No, I'm trying to think who, oh, actually maybe Paddy, maybe Paddy.
Oh no, Paddy's a sweetheart.
Ah, he's brewing a windup, well, he's no, but he's brewing a windup.
Right. Oh, that poor man. Alright, well.
You're gonna, you're gonna move from this very dangerous construction site.
I'm leaving, right? Thank you for, thank you for your service, okay? And good to see you, Plonkoo.
Yeah.
Hang on. Lovely time with the ladders here on Purple RP. Didn't feel bad about that Ira, but needed to grab you whilst you were free. Um, love the lawyer stuff. Nothing could go wrong. There's a lift here that works as well, right? He's just a workaholic, yay. I just really like Lawyer RP, to be honest. Yes, lawyer. Be talking floating, that's for fucking sure. Plonkoo, can only apologize, we all should be sorry. It is nice to mix things up. Oh fuck, how do I get out of here now? I think I can get out down here. You always seem to blame me for it, so I'll take full responsibility. I was just about to blame Verity and Ronnie, glad we can all agree. 36, yeah. I know fake ID much? No! Servants benefited greatly from the soap reality show edge you have brought to it. Very much enjoying doing the live coaching, if Cheatem needs any, I'd love to uh, do some with you mannequins. I think I need a via Cheatem, so if we can get over there sorted, I think we definitely should. Very true, I wouldn't be half of it into all this RP business without the soap uh, the soap drama I get to be vaguely adjacent to. She's a profesh, that's why I did all the apologies and stuff. Clothes are floating now, I can get down to business. I think the lift only works on single player, yeah, right. That makes sense. Javaro Mate, how you doing? Got the name for you. Very smart, I'll be in touch, I hope I get basic instincted. Woodcock should be 45. He's wise beyond his years. I genuinely might get my girlfriend saying fuck off. Good. I hope you're sleeping on the couch tonight. Worth it. Oh fuck. Um, yeah, fuck, I will go get some food. What was I gonna say? Wake up sheeple, oh no. Need to arrange some live coaching myself, just need to work out what I need coaching on, yeah. Yeah, Woodcock needs some coaching. Ronnie's up for some coaching too. Chase, I have a Plonkoo Athena and a rookie was great, just editing it down. For some reason I made Gary's disguise, being an Alvis impersonator, yeah, I can see that. Dating age appropriately. But for the life coaching. She does team building confidence classes, conflict mediation, did a confidence class yesterday and I'd love to do uh, team building somewhere interesting. City council could probably use some team building. She's only eight years younger. I thought she was like 21. No, I'd have run for the hills if, if so, just older than I thought. Um, I got enough cash on me. She's comfortable, but team building would be fun, yeah. Away. Oops. Thought I knocked him out. Need to get Ronnie, Josie, Nancy together, yeah. Josie needs humbling classes. He likes to be incredibly stressed, I'll pay for Woodcock and Nancy to be mediated. Absolutely naughty, serious? That sediment discussion when it all fell to pieces. Please just, I'll get see this. Worst night of my life. I love that. I was actually feeling so bad for you watching it unfold. But it didn't put you off lawyer entirely. Like, because they're two people I intend to never be a lawyer for. Don't you want to live? Refuse to represent Woodcock. As if. Very smart move, blacklisted after this case. Has to represent himself. Oh yeah, that'll, that'll be trouble free. No one's gonna suffer. Feel like Woodcock has a chance in my delusion, of course he does. She wants 50 grand for what? What did, what did I cost 50 grand? He'll prob's get off. Of course he will. Nothing, nothing ever sticks. Hey rat, I don't know, I've heard that judge is a bastard. I can't say I'd be surprised. I mean, I hope I do, but... You know, it's been one hell of a ride. When the hell is it going to court? Very soon, I hope, need Woodcock to sort his lawyer, yeah, basically when I get a lawyer. Um... So, I've messaged them and I've uh, asked Lichuk about it and told him that, um, I've sent a message to the legalese. So I'm hoping, um, because I believe it's gonna be Lichuk's lawyer character, who's going to represent Woodcock. Um... That'd be good, yeah. Yeah, I think HAPs, you know, enjoys a good challenge. So yeah, we'll see, I feel like we're getting close. Ah, forgot I had these. I bring popcorn, yeah. Yeah, it's gonna be fun. I'm looking forward to it. Don't bet I lose too much money. Long as I lose less than 50, I think I can live with that. Hope his RP isn't competent. Wonder if Cheatem will be ready for what Wilson is planning, I hope next week, could be next year though, interesting. Been Nancy's witness now, she's become so fond of Woodcock, is tearing Verity apart, yeah, I've, I've been wondering about that. And Woodcock does know that um, Verity is a major witness. He found out basically straight away. Um... I think that's who Peter said. There you go, Verity Royale is the main witness. Um... So yeah, I feel like, I don't think Woodcock said anything about it yet, has he? Um... Otherwise I might be at a disadvantage against the guy who wrote the book. Oh. Well, there's not much, I'm guessing there's not much about civil stuff. Nothing too stressful, please. But you're the best lawyer in town, yeah. Have to add a very small print, uh, and only. Okay now, I forgot, I got that info for you, yeah. Yeah, I've, I, it's been in the back of my mind, but yeah, I keep forgetting about it. No promises, but you have basically been hinted a bit of it. I'm double involved accidentally. I'm sure HAP will be fair, yeah, if anything you want me to lose. Maybe that's why he's tolerating her awful minute taken. I think, I think he's just as clueless as to what minutes actually are. There's a lot more flexibility with civil cases, right? They're gonna be a jury? Dunno. I doubt it, but I don't know. Just tried to spell jury with a, with a D. Jury. Nah, but there will be an audience. Yeah, cool. Okay, I've made far bigger mistakes in that. Hmm, triggering. Long as I have a good seat. Yeah, they got um, what do you call it? Like balcony seating. I'm glad it's not like the Ronnie case. Feel like that was probably um mostly police work, wasn't it? You'd see from the balconies, yeah. I didn't even realise there was a balcony during the whole Ronnie case. I um I think I saw it on someone's VOD after the fact. I was like, oh fucking hell, I didn't even know there were people up there. Because to be honest, I think the legal argument will be the most entertaining part, yeah. Outcome will be a nice plus. Yep, yep. Oh, need to do funeral, Davey's funeral as well. Fuck's sake, too much going on. Um. Funerals really, I've got like um unless you want something special, like with Tammy's funeral, there was like uh things added in for it. But I think every, literally every other funeral we've done, it's just been. We haven't used anything extra. And I've got um uh a list of passages to read and a list of songs to play that I just kind of mix and match every funeral I've done. So um it's, there's really not that much involved. You know what I mean? Up to you though, if you want, if you want extra stuff. Uh, you would need to think about that and then talk to admins about it. But otherwise we can just work with um literally a date. A time and a date. And preferably um information about Davy, about his life. That'd be the, that's probably the most, at bare minimum, that'd be the most lurk. Uh, writing up uh um stuff to say, to mention about Davy's life. But if Cheetah loses, it's like at least it's done. I think, you know. Cheetah might lose. Cheetah and Nancy might lose, but I don't think that's gonna mean Woodcock has won. You know what I mean? In fact, Cheetah has no legal obligation to them anymore, yeah. Biggest fucking win. He's buying a house and going on holiday to recover either way. Nice. He deserves it, yeah. Oh, okay, yeah, yep. Get it booked in, get him in the ground. Wavy goodbye to Davy. Put him in the bins, yeah. I have a question, Jen. Are you doing stuff for Valentine's? We put Ronnie and Woodcock life coaching and spiritual stuff on the backburner until Davy and hopefully Rab are in the ground, yeah. Um, nah, yeah, yeah, whatever, whatever. I'm in no rush, uh either way. You know me. Good idea, F you Rab. Hey. Sorry, he's a mani. Love you. Oh, that comrade's getting attached to Rab, but never gonna get rid of him. He's such a pig. Rab and Stella would make for an epic match. Interesting. I'm quite enjoying the um the glimpses of Stella and Pernel I've seen so far. Something, something feels right about that. I've written a Valentines-y pub quiz, but I don't know when to host it. Interesting. He's got the best wardrobe. Spent like 45 minutes looking for Doc Martens the other night. He looks good for 70. What's he, 70? Stella called Jay Babe. Weirdly Rab and Clementine had a nice uh time yesterday. Interesting, yet you chose that uh white tracksuit. How did Jay react to that? He's probably just like, okay. He said he liked the trainers. I uh, that's right, yeah, I did see that stuff. That was fucking funny. The world ain't won't they? That was his white knight outfit. He has layers. Souvenirs that keep him young. He's the funner. Oh, 69. Nice. Wilson needs to talk to Jay. What's Jay, Griston Wilson as well? I wish we could uh watch how that played out. Can't believe he's fucking 72, looks 40. Is he 72? Who did Wilson match with his destiny? Thinking of a who shot Phil Mitchell thing with Rab. What's that? Is that like, he shot Mr. Burns? Himself. Plonker searched him and he noticed the, I had two cards. I didn't even see that myself. You got two of the same card. I've did the other night when uh Woodcock and Plonker were guessing his age and Plonker said four as the fun number. Really? He is 69, yeah, yeah. Need to uh go to sleep and catch a ladder. Catch a wreath. Yeah, it's about that time, isn't it? Yeah, you could have one last Destiny match. What do I get again? The, the chicken? Oops. Um. Fuck did I do with it? Shit. I don't think it's any of them. Oh shit. So many flyers. Donkey from Mayo. Pete's a this survivor circle. Paranormal's issue one. I think I know what this is. Yep. Um. They are adult feed, right? I think I might get rid of this one. We'll see. They're adult, right? Do we know the other chicken yet? Yeah, I believe it's uh Mickey. Um. Uh, Brad's character. I think from the prison break event. Cause it was Mickey and Mikey, I think. I mean, it just fits Wilson's luck anyway. Uh, he's just cursed. That's very interesting. Yes, they are adult feet. Yeah, okay. They even asked that question, bro, on stream, fuck's sake. Well, I just Google, I just like Googled sexy feet pics or some shit. I think it's the colour. It makes me feel a little uncomfortable. Alright, we'll keep it. Uh. Little teapot. Swap me. Wait, what the fuck is this? Is this the other one? Okay. It's a this. Oh, that'd be the uh Woodcock drawing that Norrie did. Donkey from Mayo, S H. S H, what's S H? S H two. S H three. Walking group. Athena, Goth girl, Fajah. Yugi's party bus. Yeah, see, I don't wanna get rid of any of these. They feel like collector's items. I reckon this one's a pretty pretty good collector's item. See, this had to be added in manually for the funeral. And there are various decorations and stuff uh admins had to add in. Documents I can probably get rid of, but they're like, it's like a fucking time capsule. These slager bombs I've kept because they were the last two slager bombs I ever bought from Tequila La before it got burnt down. It's got sentimental value. Lawyer, ambulance, ambulance. We got five avenue menus. I think that was an accident. Where the fuck's my destiny card? The one of these. Ah, yep. Chicken. What the fuck's this? Yeah, right. Ah, yeah, that proves I was at Hornies on the day that Donkey was attacked or something. Clip the audio for sure. They lost all their alcohol and just building up fungi on the uh slag bombs, yeah. His is card, isn't it? Yeah. Um. To recall who the other dog is. Um, sweet. Alrighty. Might be time to F off. Um. And of course, someone's streaming. Dang it. Um. Sweet, alright, well. Alright, no one is, no one to raid too, so we'll just end it there. Uh. Excuse me, I won't be back tomorrow. Cause I'm on a new schedule. Uh. So my schedule's basically uh Sunday night. Hang on, fuck. Sunday night. Tuesday night. Thursday night. Basically every night except uh Wednesday. Fuck, uh. Why is this confusing me? So Tuesday, so Monday night and Wednesday night, basically. Every other night except Monday and Wednesday, I think. And uh the, the game show, uh I might still be doing it at the same time every week. I've gotta think about, I might change that up, I'm not sure. Um. Have a good one. Sorry you're old now. Yeah, I'm super fucking old now. Hot chat stream soon? Yeah. Was sad I missed all the music and comedy chat the other night. Oh, was that after we did some um where we were talking about Aussie stuff, right? Then watched some uh, some like Nick Cave and stuff. I'm off to bed. I was gonna go to bed an hour ago, yeah. No worries, Bob. Can't do the game show, it's bad for my mental health, yeah. I've, I've been trying to think of new games to add to it as well, new challenges, um. But uh, I've come up with Zilch so far. Yeah, yep, yep, yep. Yeah, that was fun. I'm doing some um put a day aside a week or something, or make time at least some, at some point for uh like multiplayer games, like um really wanna do Among Us and the Dal and Dawson thing, um. The Dal and Dawson thing, um... I've got a handful of games. That I want to actually, I want to play, like multiplayer, you know, fun fucking games. It's just finding the time. So yeah, I might actually put something, maybe put something on the Discord and see if we can actually... Get something fucking organised. I'll make time for any of them, sweet. We just need to get organised, yeah, that's it, yeah. So yeah, I'll put something out on Discord and see, uh... Try to get everyone aligned and figure out a game, what we're gonna play. Uh, sweet, alright, well, today's been fun. I think that's all I got. So, thanks for watching everyone, thanks for the RP. Probably won't be back tomorrow, probably the day after. Cheer. That's all I got. Alright, well, peace out. Thanks again, everyone. Good night, mannequins. Good night, everybody. See you all soon, tootally. Bye bye, Jen. Night, comrade. You're very welcome. Letterboxd doing it. Bye bye. Goodbye.